I'm going to call the Springfield City Council Work Session to order with roll call.
Mayor Ben Gordon.
Here.
Councillor Weber.
Here.
Councillor Mo.
Here.
Councillor Rodley.
Here.
Councillor Blackwell.
Here.
Councillor Doyle.
Here.
And Councillor Pictionary.
Here.
Thank you.
We have two work session items tonight. The first one's the land acquisition for affordable housing. Update. With Katie and Erin.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Katie Carroll, Housing Analyst for the city, joined by Erin Feifield, our Community Development Analyst. So tonight, just wanted to give you a little update on the city's land acquisition efforts. As you're all aware, council-directed staff to look for land to buy, to be developed with income-qualified housing to serve household with low incomes. So far, the city has acquired three properties. Using mostly one-time ARPA funds that the city received through an IGA with Lane County, originally received 1.5 million, about 900,000 of that is remaining. We'll be back to you on July 1st for your consideration of a program to authorize, sorry, for your consideration to authorize a program. For land acquisition that would allow us to. Help developers apply for those funds as forgivable loans to acquire land for that purpose also. But tonight, we're focusing on the three city-owned properties. Wanted to give you some updates on them. We're in the process of getting landscaping maintenance put together for all three, especially given that we've been getting a lot of rain. And then, as we mentioned in the packet, we also have a webpage set up now that talks about the city's general land acquisition efforts for housing and also all the city-owned properties. So I'm going to talk about the two properties that the city acquired from Lane County, and then Erin will talk about the third one. So as you'll recall, we took over ownership of two properties that the county had tax foreclosed on for the purposes of developing affordable housing. So the first one at Laura Street. The council directed staff to award with home ARP funds, so that'll be for affordable rental housing. That RFP is going to open soon, hopefully in the next month. It's being run by the city of Eugene on behalf of the Springfield Eugene Home Consortium. And then that will close in the late fall. Also, about that property, we had a neighborhood meeting back in April. To let people know, one, that the city owned the property, what the general plans are and kind of next steps. And we're planning on having another meeting with neighbors and interested developers once that RFP goes out and we get an idea of who's interested in responding to it. And then finally, we have an email list where neighbors or other interested folks can sign up to get big updates on that property. So then moving to South 52nd, which is the other tax-foreclosed property that the city took over. Oh, sorry, was there a question?
Oh, sorry, I just saw Councillor Pictionary raised his hand, but.
I think, sorry. Joe, are you waiting? Or you have a question now?
Yeah, I mean, you can finish up on the 52nd Street, and probably after that is time for questions, right?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, sorry. So the South 52nd property, which is the other one we took over from the county as a tax-foreclosed property. Council-directed staff to make that one available for homeownership. The city doesn't have any construction funding available to pair with that property, so it's kind of fallen to the bottom of those three priorities, just given that the other two. Are attached to existing RFP processes potentially, which Erin will get into. And what else do I have to say about that one? The city does, however, have the Springfield Home Ownership Program or the SHOP Program. That could be utilized to lower the cost for a home buyer at those. Houses, once they're created, as well as the SDC Program for Home Ownership, which the council has currently authorized through December of 2025. So those are both resources that someone could potentially access to make homeownership possible there. It sounds like maybe we have a question from Councillor Pictionary before we move to the next one.
Go ahead, Joe.
Yes, thank you, Sean, our mayor. Couple of questions that come to mind. As you're speaking, you are talking about the lower income or the income qualified, et cetera. So I don't see anywhere in this documentation of what that, the definition of that and what the AMI is, that definition. And I haven't seen documentation recently in some transactions that the city has been looking at. That are mentioning 80% of the AMI and some at 60. And it appears as though that is a self-imposed percentage, or is there a state requirement that must have that certain percentage level? And then, secondly, I'm concerned when you indicated that to have that ARPA money available, et cetera, to start a program to which to administer, et cetera, et cetera. But it was my understanding that you cannot use ARPA funds for programs, or at least that's something where we don't want to get involved in creating a program that has cost into perpetuity. With using ARP as sort of a seed money for a project, which we don't have to be able to continue. So I'm concerned about those two points.
All right, so getting to the first question, so Christina's here, so maybe she can jump in if I'm wrong, but I believe for the tax-foreclosed properties. That to take those over from the county, it has to be for a public purpose. There are several listed. One of them is for low-income housing. Which is defined at the 80% AMI level. Now, when you talk about the 60% AMI level, some of that has to do with other funding. So for the Laura Street property. The home ARP funding that would be paired with that is limited to the 60% AMI. So that's why it would be 60% AMI for that property. And then for the 16th and Main property that Erin's going to talk about. We used those county, that $1.5 million one-time funding from the county, and one of the requirements of that. Was that that be for low-income housing also, again, 80% AMI. Did you have anything to add to that one, Erin, before I move to the next question?
I was just going to add, we have, yeah, to the question about the who decides the AMI, we have been looking at either where are we getting the land, or in this case, what funding is being used. I think a question we did bring to council, which you gave input on during our last work session, was for. The land acquisition of sort of making this additional ARPA money available. It's sort of an interesting, it's a good reminder, councillor, of saying, you're right, we can't just create a new program that won't be funded afterwards. And so the attempt being to not create a program per se, but to make the funding available until it runs out. And it's not available for operating costs, it's only available for the cost of purchasing land. And so quote-unquote, that's the program, is to say we have land available that developers can apply for, or we have, thank you. We have funds available that developers can apply for in order to purchase land, and once that is done. There is, the program is done. So a limited time in that sense. But your input in saying. I think it was 51% of making sure all units are at least 51% of them are low-income. And we sort of had, it could have been more, could not have been less based on the source of funding, but you wanted to make sure it was at that 51%, so you'll see that. On the July 1st date when we bring it back to you. But we're sort of, so many different funding streams or sort of opportunities and trying to braid them in a way is where. Those percentages.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I'm just trying to keep it straight away in my head, too. So, okay, thank you very much.
All right, any other questions? All right, let's keep going on to the 16th Street one.
Great. So 16th and Main, I'll just note to the two Lane County foreclosed properties are smaller, they're each less than an acre, they're less than half an acre. Laura Street, we're imagining four units. 52nd Street, we're imagining maybe five, up to six. When we get to 16th and Main, now we're talking about apartment style, given the zoning and the site, it's 1.1 acres. And so just a little different magnitude and sort of. How we would think, how would we? Help create a successful program. And so when we look at 16th and Main, we used ARPA funds to purchase that from the county. There is the requirement that those funds be, that that property be low-income. But in order to fund an apartment-style complex, like given our experience, it's going to need significant subsidies. So when we think about. 16th and Q Street and the Cornerstone property, that's about a 12, $13 million project. They were able to get about. $7 million from the state and then needed additional local funds. Which they were able to pair with home funds and get $2 million there. So that is, and thinking about how to make 16th and Main Street successful. We think the best path forward is to pair that with the home funding RFP process, and so award both the property. And the available home funds to a developer who comes in through a competitive process. And right now, we have about $750,000 available in home funds. And so that would be a fall RFP. It's as soon as we can make that available. I will say, we did have a conversation with Oregon Housing and Community Services, just to confirm. How would you receive this property if it came in as far as location goes? And they said it met all of their criteria for funding. And so we feel confident it would sort of be able to be supported in that way if there was a project. But how could we support it at the local funding as well? So that's where the home funding pairing is being proposed. I think that's all I, yeah, I think that was it.
Go ahead, Corey.
Thank you, thank you. As you know, I'm all over this and I'm so excited to see how it keeps evolving. That 750K in home funds, is that specific, like Springfield's part of that? Okay. Because I know in the last couple sessions, cycles, or whatever we call them, we haven't really had anything to throw in the pot. So I was like, have we saved that up, or do we have to share?
Yeah, that is our two, like a two-year, I think that's our second, two years' worth of home funds, because. With the 16th and Q site, we sort of gave everything we had with the $2.2 million award.
Great.
Yep, so.
Thank you.
Other questions? So do we have any indication from the county, or at some point, properties are going to come available again?
Through the tax-foreclosed.
I would assume, yeah, I would assume so, right? Like that's, they do it about annually at some point.
Maybe even twice a year, as I understand it, there's a sheriff's sale twice a year, and so the property manager has. As I understand, their renewed process is to reach out to all of the jurisdictions within the county that have a property and sort of ask the question.
Okay, so we're kind of tracking that, and it's going to develop whenever, whenever it's going to develop.
Yeah, and I will say, as I understand it, in, per the manual, and non, oh, Christina, you want to jump in? Oh, I was just going to say, I think there is an opportunity to make the same questions available for a nonprofit or someone else to step in to acquire it for low-income purposes.
Okay. Go ahead, Christina.
There was a change in Oregon State law in this last legislative session to address a constitutional decision regarding tax foreclosures. That has temporarily halted any deeds being issued as a result of the tax foreclosure process. So the city has to have a deed in hand out of that tax foreclosure process before we could take further steps. There's at least, I don't have the details in front of me on timeline, but it's at least a year. For the legislature to adopt a change to the general county tax foreclosure process. Properties can still be foreclosed, but they can't actually change title. In the duration while the state's figuring out how to address that constitutional issue. Doesn't affect the properties that we quieted title on already. But it would make it difficult to use that process and meet the December 31st, 2025 spending deadline.
So I, I guess I kind of think about it in a couple of tracks. One of them is now that we've acquired a certain amount of properties and we have capital that to go towards building, right? Like now we have to sort of shift and, you know, break ground on the work that we've got. And, you know, and I am fine pairing the home funds that we have with 16th Street. That is a very common model like that. And then, as I think about us coming out of that next section. Of, from a housing development perspective, then, then we'll be back to the question, okay, to promote housing, how do we find more? How do we find more land? And what does that look like in whatever the situation, situation may look, may look like? The question that I've got is. Really, we've got multiple sort of sources of funding, right? And I thought Councillor Pictionary brought up a good point, which is. We have a mobile definition of, you know, what we're actually looking for. And as you were. As we refine the housing program, it would be nice to sort of harden, you know, what we mean by certain, certain definitions. Because it just, it just is one of those things where, because of where the funds are coming from, what we're talking about, I mean, you know. Affordable housing, low-income housing, market housing can all mean different things. And I think it. It helps with that sort of transparency and clarity with the community about what are we trying to do? Why are we trying to do it?
We'll brainstorm that.
Cool, because I don't have any good ideas on how to get it done.
You will be involved.
Yes. All right, any other questions? All right, it looks good. I think you're getting the head nod to keep going, and we'll see you when we see you again.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, second item is market study for non-union employees and update to compensation plans with the chain.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Shane Hertz. I'm the Human Resources Director for the city of Springfield, and I am here with Candice Stefan, who is the Senior HR Analyst. The purpose of tonight's work session is to provide counsel with some information related to. An AIS that's going to be submitted on July 1st, requesting authorization for the city manager to approve the pay ranges for our non-union employees. The purpose of our work session really was to explain kind of the thought and the process and that went into the recommendation and to answer any questions that council has before we. Move this towards an agenda item on the, on July 1st. As a little background, because I know that there's a few new councillors and it's not something we do a lot. The non-rep compensation cycle follows a three-year. Model where it essentially is a lead meets and falls behind. So we adjust the pay ranges every three years. We do a very intensive process. We engage a consultant. And in this case, not only do we engage in a consultant, but we also look at our regional comparators to make a recommendation. So through the work, through the consultant, there's an attachment that was included in your packet, which. Kind of summarized the benchmark positions. It's not possible for us to look at every position. But what we do is we look at the benchmark positions and we look at the market midpoint of those pay ranges. And through kind of compiling of those. Individual positions, we found that we were lagging the market by slightly over 8.5%. And because our pay cycle has a moving forward model, where we're trying to predict where we're going to be sitting in fiscal year 26. We applied an aging factor, which is what we've traditionally have done. Historically, we've adjusted that by 4% or 2% a year. Understanding that we're going to fall behind the market in the third year. And we've underestimated what the economy's been through that period. And so this time, we've aged that or making a recommendation for aging that 6%. Which gets us to that 15 and a half percent. So our recommendation is that we adjust all pay ranges by 15 and a half percent. And then the way individuals actually move into the pay range is they move to the nearest step that provides at least 3%. We've budgeted or did a cost analysis of what that's going to look like, and it has an implementation cost of a little over 5 and a half percent. Which is slightly ahead of the, or slightly more than the budgetary forecast that we had. We kind of knew that this was coming. It came, I think, in October of last year and indicated that I felt we were about 17 to 20%. And we did a small adjustment at that time, and that data seemed to be supported by the evidence both from Gallagher as well as the additional analysis that I did on my own. So that's a lot of talking. I will pause to see if there's any, any particular questions that, that council has.
Victoria.
I'm just curious, because the, I see the 15.5 across the board, but I'm wondering about when some of. The positions are only, you know, a couple percent off, and then some of them are over 30% off. That doesn't seem very fair to the. Folks that are so far off, that we're only closing the gap. You know, slightly for them, where we're doing much more for others. So that's, that's my curiosity about that, how we handle that.
Yeah, so it's a complicated question, and, and I'm aware of a communication that was sent. I disagree with, both with Gallagher representing. Based on the data that I looked at and the information that we got from Gallagher. Initially, I would tell you for that particular position, Gallagher had it at about 13%. I have it slightly less than that. And part of the complexity is when you're looking at market data, you have to not just look at the job title. And in this case, I think Gallagher looked at a job title that wasn't actually accurate for the positions that we were marking. And there are variations based on, on cities, whether a particular position, City Recorder is a great example, where in some areas. I think in Roseburg, for example, it's an assistant city manager position, and other areas, it's a large program manager. And so there's variations that you have to kind of look at the data a little bit, a little bit cleaner. The other key aspect is Oregon's Equal Pay Act. And so we broadband our positions, which means that we look at positions under what's called a decision-band method. And so positions are grouped comparably by. By the level of decision-making authority that they have. And so what we try to do is we try to target key benchmark positions, make sure that we're looking at that, and then we. Group those positions under the DBM, and then I do another analysis to confirm whether or not there's anything that is. You know, creating a market disadvantage that we don't want to face. And through my analysis, I don't see that that's actually an accurate projection. In fact, I feel like this puts us in a pretty good market position. The other key part is when we're looking at this data, we're looking at it at the market midstep. And most of our comparators have pay range widths that are roughly around 25 to 30%, and we have a 40% width, and so there's an additional 5% that's on the top end. And then on top of that, if we feel like we're falling significantly market behind, the option we have is what we have is, we call them shadow steps or hidden steps, market steps. And so there's two additional steps that are not used unless we fall at a market disadvantage, and then we have the ability to open those steps. I have done a great deal of analysis on this, and, and there are certainly going to be some positions where we're more competitive in the market than others. That's, that's always the case. We try to target in and around plus or minus 8% at the midpoint. And I feel the 15 and a half percent does that pretty effectively.
And so if, let's just say, any of these non-rep positions were to become vacated. In the next three years, do you feel that our rates that we're doing are competitive enough that we would actually be able to, that we'd be able to? Get people to apply and actually be able to fill those with qualified people?
We're filling positions today at a market, serious market disadvantage. And, you know, it's, I'm looking at a lot of positions, but I feel pretty good about these positions. We, we've historically hamstringed ourselves because we've put in a, what we called a cost of labor adjustment. Which has impacted our ability to be competitive in the market by 4 and 1/2%. I've dropped that cost of labor adjustment in this analysis. I've looked at all of the positions. There are some that, you know, were at market or may need to open the market steps, but the greater some are putting us in a very competitive. Spot. I feel far more comfortable with these pay ranges than I did three years ago. That being said, it's hard to know what the future is going to look like, and when I look at comparative contracts, because that's really all I can get. For a sense of what the market is, we're seeing very few contracts that are doing fixed values as far as what they're expecting over year after year, and most of them are following a CPI. CPI has dropped to 3.2. I think it's going to stick around the 3% range, which is why we aged it 6%. And with that factor, I feel pretty comfortable, but there probably would be a few positions that we'll want to open. What we call the market steps or the shadow steps as we get into years two or three.
Perfect, thank you for your, thanks.
We're going to go to Nancy first, and then we'll come back to Joe.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to first recognize Shane for all of the hard work that you've done and your team as well. Mayor and Council, I saw his multiple spreadsheets that he was working from and multiple data points, and. I would say that was a very thorough work on your part, Shane. I almost feel like we need to give you the Gallagher money, but I can't just hand you people money, unfortunately. But I do say that to say that I do have confidence in, in Shane's, not only his ability to put this together, but also his commitment to. Having our compensation be fair and equitable, but also reasonable for our community. And I know we are in a very competitive job market, and we do get compared to other agencies just due to proximity. But, you know, we're very different as far as our assessed value and our property tax base that we can draw from, and so. Our pool that we can draw from as a community is smaller. So. I try really hard to lean into having a great culture here, and I think that we have wonderful employees that are very helpful. And, and they work really well together, and it's hard to put a price on that, but I think that that's reflective of the level of talent that you see in the city. So I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I just, more of a comment for shame and hopefully for the benefit of others, but. When a person sees this documentation, we see these graphs. We got, like you said, we have, we have a young council, for sure. But when you see these numbers, like Councillor Doyle brought up, and that's a valid question. Yes, I read. The, the information sent into us via email, et cetera, and I, I get that. But I think that it may be helpful for not only you, but for the council in its entirety, or generally speaking. Is it when, when you see, and for example, the Gallagher data, is that something you pull? Or is that something that we pay for someone to do an analysis, number one? That's not really explained. But secondly, is that when you see, at least when I see a disparity. In some of those positions that are, you know, 20 some odd percent, 30% and greater. It's, I think it'd be worth your while to add an addendum piece of information to your packet that the councillors see. That you address those specific high points instead of trying to. Feed us water through a fire hose in a sense where there's a lot of information, you're telling, you're talking about how that all makes sense and that you believe it's fair. But I think some of it, some folks will absorb it better when you potentially summarize those anomalies. And that, I think, will really help the comfort level for everybody that's making these decisions. And I know it would for me. Because when you get something from out in left field like we did. It's like, whoa, we got to take a look at this, because I got to tell you, that information sent in looked, looked squared away to me. It looks, looks like it was very well put together and a lot of thought put into it. But then you're saying, well, that, we see that, but this is the reasoning behind it. And so. Here, I'm looking at that, saying, okay, well, which one makes more sense? And it's very complex, especially. What you're doing, and I appreciate, and I've really appreciated the job you've been doing since the moment you took over that position. You've done wonderful work. So. Anyway, just thought I'd throw that out there, and I appreciate, again, your work you're putting together, but I think a little more information. Added to your packet, even if it's late coming in, would be, would be helpful.
Thank you, Corey.
Thank you. And I also really appreciate the work that you've done and the time that I've been here, and as you know, I get to do just enough HR to be dangerous. I really appreciate you calling out the difference between a job title. And the, the job duties and what it looks like within the organization, because that's, as you sort of pointed out, and I think people are sharing. That's a lot of the complexity, that we may have a job title, but how that works within this organization may look very different in terms of number of reports and how much authority and all that. But I do have a question, because, and since you mentioned the Oregon Pay Equity Act. Do we, in the city of Springfield, have a process by which an individual could, you know, submit a pay equity challenge or whatever at some point? Do we have any process where people could say, hey, I don't think I'm being paid fairly, and then we go through an evaluation of them individually?
Yeah, sorry, I was trying to figure out whether I was supposed to respond to some of Councillor Pictionary's comments. That's fine. So for Councillor Pictionarys, we'll certainly take that feedback and add more documentation to the AIS that we're submitting on July 1st. And for everybody's knowledge, Gallagher is a outside consulting firm that we utilize. On a regular basis, but primarily to do a large comp survey, which is part of our SEAU contract, and so our non-reps traditionally follow the SEAU. Model and methodology, which is we engage the consultant, they provide his feedback. Gallagher, like all entities, has gone through some transition and turnover and changes, and so the data that we've historically provided, which was a. Much more robust PowerPoint. Didn't really have the right substance that we were looking for to present that. And, and actually, some of their pay ranges were supposed to be a little bit less, and so we were trying to find, find the sweet spot for that. So the, the answer to your question, Councillor Rodley, related to processes and pay equity, yes, we have a, we have a policy that outlines kind of the. The process, if they feel like it's a pay equity issue. We also have a process for individuals that feel like their position is either in the wrong grade or wrong classification. And that's outlined in our regrade reclassification administrative regulation where they're able to submit documentation. to submit documentation to support why they feel that way. So there are ways in which people could do that. And like everybody else, I was a bit taken back by the communication because our, our general process has not changed over the six years that I've been here, which is we look at the overarching data. We use that to align ourselves in some form to a market model. And then we, from there have to do maybe some additional fine tuning on positions to determine whether they're graded properly or not, or whether the market data point is correct or not. In this case, you know, Gallagher had a weird data point on a couple of position classifications. I went and validated that by looking at comparable communities in the geographical area that we live in, which involves includes Corvallis, Albany, Eugene, Medford, Tiger, Beaverton. I know I'm missing somebody, Bend. And so I, that's the, the physical data that I went and polled and looked at. My data point came back very different where I feel like that particular person's position, if you look at the top step of that range, would be sitting at 11.6 above market. Once again, I'm trying to target a 6% ish above market and it's 5.8 at the mid step, which is ideal for what we're trying to do with my 15 and a half percent. And those conversations could have happened and I could have provided the data to show that. So I do feel comfortable with that and I do feel comfortable that we'll be in a, in a much better spot than we've been in over the last three years. It's going to take some time because when you do a large pay range movement, you get compression on the bottom end because people move to the nearest step that provides three. And so while our pay ranges will be at market, we will have individuals that will be potentially below what they might get at another entity because of how that step movement works. But as far as the pay ranges go, I feel reasonably as comfortable as I can feel about that. And, and I'm really comfortable with the process of both looking at the data that we got from our consultant, but also validating that with our local geographical comparators.
Thank you. And thank you for doing all this work. I'm, I know that it's, it's, it's not like we're just throwing darts at a dartboard. I know that it's, it's a big project and I appreciate it. Thank you.
So the, the work looks really good. The questions I had, and I thought you brought up a really good point about city recorders that go all the way from assistant city managers to, I swear there's a hundred cities that that's the only employee, right? So it's a wide, a wide ranging role. When you look at this type of data, could you talk a little bit more about how you sort of reconcile sort of same job title and maybe not same job responsibilities? Is that something Gallagher does or is that something you do when you get the data?
So Gallagher provides data for us. And, and once again, to answer Counselor Pictionary's comment, which I was, I was a little bit vague. The, the data we got from Gallagher included both salary survey materials that they purchase and pull data from. And it also included a custom survey that we request that they send out to entities that we've used year after year. There's about 17 of them. And so you're, you're counting on whatever you respond. Historical Gallagher has taken the 80% approach with some of that. I'm, I'm not saying I'm comfortable or not comfortable with that, but generally what we try to do is we, you look at the data, you look at the job descriptions. And then, you know, the first indicator for me usually is I look at the job title, I plug in the pay range. And if the pay range seems dramatically different than what everybody else is paying, then I start digging in a little bit deeper to find out what's the true story for that. In my world besides, before I came here, we would manipulate that data a little bit where we knew that there was some differences in it that needed to be adjusted because of the way that they're structured. A great example would be the city of Eugene's HR director role is, is very different than what it is here. Doesn't serve on the executive team. And then there are some executive roles that are very different than their counterpart that we would have here at Springfield. So those aren't always the best data points that you want to look at. And so you have to kind of do a little bit of massaging and then you have to decide whether or not that's a good data point or not. And then you, you pull that out. I try to make sure that my data points that I'm using locally, that I at least have at least three of them. I'm looking at roughly six or seven. And if I've got less than three data points, it's probably not a very good, accurate indicator. But it gives me some indication if I've, if I'm in the ballgame or not. So there's a lot of science and a lot of art that goes into trying to get this to, to be fair and equitable.
That's, that's really great feedback. And then like, I'm fine with the recommendation about how we go forward. I know you're going to bring it back from a resolution perspective. When you think about, you know, sort of the next four or five years, right? We've had this, you know, pay structure for a while, right? Is this going to be, is there something where you're like, as a HR professional, you're like, hey, we are good. You know, th- this is the, this is the best process we can have, or are there other tweaks down, down the road that we could make?
Well, we're looking for some tweaks, so we're, we're going to kick the tires and figure out whether or not Gallagher's model is the right model for us or whether we should be exploring a different way of looking at it. You know, the, the feedback obviously is you want to be more market driven. The unanswered question is organs equal a pay act and how does that apply? And, and so for all of those reasons, once we implement, we're going to start transitioning into either some sort of RFP or RFI to kind of decide whether or not we want to look at some, a different way of doing things. And so we anticipate coming back to council within the next year or two with a different idea on, on what this may look like moving forward.
Okay. And that's great. That's great to hear. I appreciate you thinking forward here. Any other questions? And I think we are good with the recommendation then. Thank you. Appreciate it. All right. Thank you. I am going to go ahead and adjourn the work session. We will be back on this link at seven o'clock for the regular session.
It's not very often I get to use the gavel.
All right. I'm going to call the regular session of the Springfield City Council to order with roll call.
Mayor Van Gordon.
Here.
Counselor Webber.
Here.
Counselor Mo.
Here.
Counselor Rodley.
Here.
Counselor Blackwell.
Here.
Counselor Doyle.
Here.
And Counselor Pictionary.
Here.
If.
Oh, please join me with the political allegiance.
There are two, two times designated for public testimony this evening under business from the audience and public hearings. If you are attending in person, please complete the request to speak card located at the city recorder desk in the council chambers and turn them in to the city recorder. If you are joining us online with a tablet, smartphone, computer, and wish to speak at either of those times, please raise your hand. Use the raise hand feature in Zoom. The order of public testimony is as follows. Anyone in person in the council chambers and anyone who has raised their virtual hand. Before I call the first item tonight, I do want to note, I know a lot of you are here for the pheasant annexation hearing. There was a revised agenda that pushed that item a little bit further down the, down the list. Just be aware of it. The updated agendas are printed over there. First item, please.
First item is Springfield upbeat mayor's recognition. We have a special recognition this evening. Brian Conlon, 45 years of service. And Nancy, this is your item.
Uh, thank you, Mayor and Council. So I am going to actually go to the standing area there and invite Neil Adadi to join me as well as Brian Conlon.
I don't believe James, James is here, so you're fine without your badge.
Apologies for those I have my back to. I'm trying to not back to the audience. Brian, you're so important. It takes two of us to do this. We, we had to, I had to delegate some of this. So I'm so honored tonight to recognize your service to the city, which has just been absolutely phenomenal. But I want to stay for the record, this is not a retirement announcement. So don't get any ideas and don't get comfortable. We just thought it was a special occasion and we wanted to celebrate with you because we love to celebrate around here and you're a lot of fun to celebrate with. So he was, I have notes because I, I can't, there's too much. So Brian was hired by the city in May of 1979. In review of his three month evaluation in August of 1979, his supervisor wrote, Brian is progressing as he should. If he continues to gain experience and knowledge, he will become a valuable member of the sewer crew. Which you did and so much more.
Joe Curry.
Uh, and, and indeed he did. So you continued in your progress. You became a supervisor in 1988. Maintenance manager in 2007 and DPW division director in 2019. And you have managed every program operations manages from facilities supervisor to subsurface supervisor, streets, traffic, you know, everything. And as the division director, you lead one of the most diverse divisions in the city. And it's a group that provides direct in-person connection with our community. And I know that it's been a personal goal of yours to bring up people in this industry and encourage people to get into trades as a, as a great field to get into. So Neil is going to add a few comments from your colleagues.
Thank you. Brian, it's an honor to share with you some of the comments your colleagues had about your years here. So the first one is Brian emanates Springfield. He has deep roots in the community and knows everyone. It's true. He cares deeply for our community, his staff, family and friends. He serves as a mentor to staff in the city in many cases without folks even knowing it. He is a pleasure to be around and lifts up everyone with his positive attitude. Over the years, Brian's actions have both directly and indirectly led to making Springfield a great place to live, work and play. And that's from Matt Stouter, the ESD director who's here this evening. One of the most important accomplishments is Brian's ability to grow and lead the people of the operations division in a compassionate manner that is unmatched. He has a natural ability to love people for who they are, show sincere care, listen and guide. I've learned a lot about myself and how to be a public servant and how a public servant should act just from watching him. And that's from Ben Gibson, our operation maintenance manager, who is also in the back there. And Brian is super supportive of engineering and is always looking for and encouraging areas of collaboration. It's clear that every action he takes, he not only cares about operations employees, but every employee who works for the city. His passion for doing the best for Springfield comes through in every conversation, no matter how tricky, tricky or difficult. That just happened today. And he is really, he really is an institution and he does know everyone at the city, both past and present, as well as citizens and business owners. And that's from Jeff Pascal, our community development director, right in the back there. And then we have one more. Forty-five years into his career and Brian continues to show up for our community with incredible energy, passion and knowledge. He knows every corner of Springfield and is constantly innovating ways to make life better for our community members. Brian is a teacher, mentor and trusted advisor. And just as important as the information he continues to pass on is the way Brian makes you feel. He treats people with dignity and respect that truly comes from his heart. And I'm thankful for the many years we've worked together. And that's from me.
Thank you. Yeah.
So that's, oh yes. So if you want to say a few words and then we'll take a picture.
Yeah, I guess, before I even reflect, I'd like to introduce my wife Stacy. She, would you stand up Stacy? Anyway, yeah, when I started here in 1979, I saw her in elementary school. She was a ninth grade. No, she was nine years old. So some of you might go yuck, but we're actually 12 and a half years apart. And I had met her seven, or we've been married 27 years. So, and she is a lot of what charges my batteries. So. So why would somebody stay 45 years? I'll turn and face you. It's because I get to work with a phenomenal public and people that give, I get paid, you don't. And I've seen you all for years and years and years in councils and mayors before you dating back 45 years. So, and I have so much respect and just a gratefulness that confidence has been instilled in me, given me to be able to be a leader and just play. You know, come to work and play. And so I, I'm just grateful. I probably have a little bit more in the tank, but not a lot. So I'm glad that I was able to come here tonight. I want to just talk real quickly about the operations division. I work with a fun, just phenomenal, unbelievable family and staff and amazing managers, management group. But all of you that come every, every night to council or Monday nights to council, all of my colleagues that I work with in the many departments, just so much respect for you and thank you. You've mentored to me. I feel like I get more mentored as each day goes by, by a lot of young staff that are just killing it. So thank you for this honor and I appreciate it very much.
Well, don't go anywhere, Brian.
Hey, Brian, come back up. They're not, I'm not even going to let you guys take the picture yet until the council gets to say something a little bit nice, Brian.
Okay.
So I, I will tell you, we are extremely grateful for you as an individual. And one of the things that always speaks to me is just how curious about our community you are. I've been in tough conversations about ops and streets and, and you've always approached it with really an open mind and an open heart for people. And that's really made our job as elected officials easier. And frankly, has, you know, served the citizens well. And the thing that I always appreciate you is your just heart of service. I enjoy every conversation we've had and just your passion for the infrastructure in the city. You know, I learned something every time we chat and we couldn't do our job without you. So thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Joe.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. So Brian, you are an amazing individual. We met 20 years ago, I think, or more, when I was at the sheriff's office and I was trying to work with you and trying to figure out how we can get people to work here in Springfield, et cetera, with the work crews. And, you know, and many, many different things since then, from very, very huge things happening in the city and things that, that little things that people call me about, or I call you and say, hey, is there a possibility? And you have always said, sure, don't worry about it. I got it. And you, I think I even talked to you while you responded to a call. I think you were even in elk camp. And I'm like, that's just crazy. But when someone tells you or someone says, hey, you're crazy for staying there that long, you can tell them, no, I'm not. My, my heart is with Springfield. It shows every single time we've seen you, every, in your work. You bring up people like, you know, like Ben from, from the get-go and, and modeling him to, to be in a great supervisor. So I have the utmost respect for you. I've never questioned anything that you have said or said you can do or what you would be willing to do. Not even a blink of an eye. And I, I hold you very, very high in my, in my respect scale. So thank you so much for your work and I really do appreciate you a ton.
Thank you, Counselor.
Victoria.
Well, I haven't had the opportunity to know you as long as some other people, but I know that you've always been very open to my questions about public works and the things. And you just, I just see honesty in you. And I, it's easy to trust you because I, I believe that you're, you just have a good heart. And I think that it really showed in January when we had that ice storm. And you got, and you were preparing days beforehand and the amount of work that you and your crews did and what you went to. And what, I don't think that the community realizes how much you guys did during that with what you had, with the resources that we had. And so I thank you and I hope you'll stick around for a lot more than just a few more years.
Thank you, Counselor Miller.
Thank you. And as you know, but probably not everybody, this like, I am, I am such a fan and I am such a fan of your team. And I'm such a fan of the work and it's, it's Neil knows, because whenever I get to deal with a street or something, I get so excited. Cause so much of this is messy, but it's like, this is, this is, you know, what touches people's lives. And one of the things that I have appreciated so much for me before I was on council is just, you know, often if someone's worked someplace a long time, they get stuck. And your embracing of innovation and of trying to diversify the staff and creating apprenticeship, apprenticeship programs and bringing in more women and more people of color. And those are things that just speak to my heart in terms of where we are going as a city and creating, you know, prosperity and access for folks. And so I have
I have so appreciated working with you. And I'm so glad I get to continue to work with you and just think you've done a fantastic job. And and the mayor can testify that I keep saying, there's no way you've been here forty-five years. Like you are not forty-five years an employee because you're clearly doing, you know, you're, you're still so fresh. So thank you so much. And, um, we appreciate you.
Thank you. Likewise. My hair was black. So.
And I haven't had as much time either, but I'm so glad that I did get appointed in time before you do decide to retire because it's been a pleasure getting to know you. And you've just been so welcoming and so wonderful and always easy to talk to. And you can just tell by the, anyone else that's spoke about you tonight, your, your character. And I just appreciate you giving forty-five years to Springfield.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We had a city engineer once, became the city manager. When Nancy decides to retire.
You'll find me way up in the Willows someplace. Yeah. Probably not willing to come down. So.
All right. I think we're ready to let you have your picture. Michelle.
Well, it's hard. I mean, everything that everyone has said is, is so true. Um, and I've only been here for about a year and a half, but I've enjoyed every interaction we've had and forty-five years is a huge accomplishment and the city is very lucky to have had you.
Thank you very much.
Looking over it for that long.
So I was hoping this was gonna be about two minutes.
Yeah.
But I made it longer too. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Brian.
You're not quite done.
In the middle?
Yes.
Now, we'll use them in a minute. Next item, please.
Next item is the consent calendar.
I move we approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Neil, could you call a vote, please?
Yes, Council Weber.
Yes.
Council Mo. Yes, Council Rodley.
Yes.
Council Blackwell.
Yes.
Council Doyle.
Aye.
And Council Pictionary.
Aye, thank you.
Motion passes, six yeses, zero nos. Next item, please.
Next item are public hearings. Uh, public hearing number one is the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty-five city budget adoption. Nathan Bell is here for this item.
Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, on the evenings of May thirteenth, fourteenth and fifteenth of this year, the city's budget committee, uh, met to consider and recommend the budget to city council. Uh, the resolution and exhibit in front of you this evening is such budget. Uh, we're requesting that you conduct a public hearing and take action on this item this evening.
Are there any questions? I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing. I've got no cards.
Appears we have no hands for this item. I'm gonna close the public hearing.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to, hang on, my page just flipped. I apologize. I'll make a motion to adopt resolution adopting the fiscal, the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five city of Springfield budget making appropriations and imposing a categorizing and categorizing the tax.
A second.
Neil, could you call the vote, please?
Yes, Council Weber.
Yes.
Council Mo.
Yes.
Council Rodley.
Yes.
Council Blackwell.
Yes.
Council Doyle.
Aye.
And Council Pictionary.
Yes, thank you.
Motion passes, six yeses, zero nos. Next item, please.
Public hearing number two is a resolution certifying the city's eligibility to receive state shared revenue from cigarette, marijuana, gas and liquor taxes. Jessica Mummy is here for this item.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Jessica Mummy. I'm the city's budget and procurement manager here this evening for a routine item that's in support of the fiscal year twenty-five budget adoption process that you just heard with Nathan. State law provides that cities located within a county that have a population of a hundred thousand or more, according to the most, most recent federal census, must provide four or more specified services to be eligible to receive state shared revenues. The state shared revenues are the liquor, cigarette, highway and marijuana tax apportionments. Cities are required to take steps necessary, which include holding a public hearing at both the budget committee and city council, adopting resolutions and completing required tax certifications with the state of Oregon to receive the apportionment of revenues. In the fiscal year twenty-five budget, there is just over two million dollars budgeted in the general fund due to the state shared revenue apportionment. That's all I have this evening for this item.
Are there any questions from the council? I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing. I don't have any cards for this item. Neil, do you have anybody raising their hand online?
Appears we have no hands for this item. I'm gonna close the public hearing.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution of the common council of the city of Springfield certifying eligibility for state shared revenues from cigarette, marijuana, gax, gas and liquor taxes and approving the city of Springfield's participation in the state revenue sharing program.
Second.
Neil, could you call the vote, please?
Yes, Council Weber.
Yes.
Council Mo.
Yes.
Council Rodley.
Yes.
Council Blackwell.
Yes.
Council Doyle.
Aye.
And Council Pictionary.
Yes, thank you.
Motion passes, six yeses, zero nos. Next item, please.
Next item is the fiscal year twenty-four supplemental budget number four, and Jessica Mummy is here for this item as well.
Sorry. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Jessica Mummy, budget and procurement manager here for supplemental budget number four for the fiscal year twenty-four. At various times during the fiscal year, council is requested to adjust the annual budget to reflect needed changes in planning activities, to recognize new revenues or make other required changes. These adjustments to resources and requirements change the current budget and are processed through supplemental budget requests that are scheduled by the finance department. Tonight will be the fourth and final fiscal year twenty-four supplemental budget request to come before council. A summary of key supplemental budget items that were contained in your packet include increasing police department operating expenses to support overtime, increasing fire and life safety operating expenses to support overtime, increasing the development and public works capital projects expenditures to provide funding needed for the ODOT Mill Street reconstruct, reconstruction project. ODOT required the city, um, deposit funds sooner than anticipated and prior to any activity taking place on the project. And finally, increasing police department operating expenses offset by grant revenues to support training for the department. That's all I have for this item.
Victoria.
So the question for me would be on the Mill Street, since that was but money that was, it sounds like budgeted in the future? Or was coming out of a different pot? Is that gonna be replaced? Is there gonna be a different supplement for that?
Yes, um, that item was put in for a different project. So we're simply taking money from one project that hasn't started yet, moving it to the Mill Street project and then fiscal year twenty-five, that'll be trued up.
Any other questions? All right, I'm gonna go and open the public hearing. I don't have any cards for this item. Neil, do we have anybody online?
No hands for this item.
I'm gonna close the public hearing.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution adjusting resources and requirements in the following funds. General, special revenue, building code, buyer local levy, uh, local option levy, development projects, s- street capital, sanitary sewer operations, regional wa- wastewater, ambulance and storm drainage operations.
Second.
Neil, could you call the vote, please?
Yes, Council Weber.
Yes.
Council Mo.
Yes.
Council Rodley.
Yes.
Council Blackwell.
Yes.
Council Doyle.
Aye.
And Council Pictionary.
Yes, thank you.
Motion passes, six yeses, zero nos. Next item, please.
Next item is master fees and charges update. Jessica Mummy, this is your last item of the evening.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name's Jessica Mummy, budget and procurement manager here this evening for the, um, public hearing on master fees and charges for fiscal year twenty-five. On February twenty-sixth, the city's finance director Nathan Bell met with council for guidance on an escalator percentage to use for the upcoming annual adjustments. At that meeting, council provided staff feedback to utilize a five percent escalator for fees driven by staffing costs, a three point three percent escalator for fees driven by the CPI inflation and two per sec, two point six percent for system development charges utilizing the construction cost index list and the engineering news record. On April eighth, I came before council to provide an update on the master fees and charges schedule. At that meeting, a red line diversion was presented and provided for council review and feedback using the escalators provided by council to staff. After this meeting, several additional discussions took place with council regarding fees contained in the schedule. These discussions included the Santa PAC annual rate adjustment, the housing diversity tax exemption fee, wastewater and stormwater rates, and the planning and engineering development fees. Staff have incorporated the revised Santa PAC rates, the housing and diversity tax fee, air, tax exemption fee and wastewater and stormwater rates as approved by council. A new fee proposed, which is the residential driveway parking review fee, was added after the work session held on April eighth. As the master fees and charges schedule contain fees from a variety of departments, each department is responsible for setting and recommending their perspective fees based on a variety of factors. Representatives from each department are available to answer any questions related to their specific fees. That's all I have.
Are there any questions? All right, I'm gonna go and open the public hearing. I don't have any cards for this item. Neil, do we have anybody online?
No hands for this item.
I'm gonna close the public hearing.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution amending master fees and charges scheduled chapters one through ten with an effective date of July one, twenty twenty-four.
Well, second.
Neil, could you call the vote, please?
Yes, Council Weber.
Yes.
Council Mo.
Yes.
Council Rodley. Council Blackwell. Council Doyle. And Council Pictionary.
Yes, thank you.
Motion passes, six yeses, zero nos.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next item, please.
Next item is public hearing number five. This is annexation of territory to the city of Springfield and Willamette Park and Recreation District. Annex zero point three seven acres of residential property located at map eighteen dash zero two dash zero six dash one four, tax lot zero six two zero zero, withdrawing the same territory from the Willackenzie Rural Fire Protection District. This is an ordinance annexing certain territory nine zero four Filbert Lane to the city of Springfield and Willamette Park and Recreation District, withdrawing the same territory from the Willackenzie Rural Fire Protection District, adopting a severability clause and providing an effective date. This is a first reading and Tom Severs is here for this item.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilors. I am Tom Severs, Senior Planner with the Current Planning Section. Tonight, the council is requested to consider an ordinance to annex an approximately point three seven acre area that includes one tax lot in south central Springfield. Next slide, please. The proposed annexation area is highlighted in red and is improved with a residential dwelling. The applicant is the property owner and they have requested annexation to receive city services to facilitate a future residential partition. Next slide, please. The site is zoned R1, low density residential with the urbanizable fringe UF ten overlay. As you can see, it is contiguous to the city limits immediately to the north, east and west. If annexation is approved, no other zoning changes are requested except for the removal of the UF ten overlay. With annexation, the subject property will be removed from the special districts such as the UF ten overlay depicted here and service areas such as the Willackenzie Rural Fire Protection District. No other zoning changes will occur with this annexation. There are four approval criteria for annexations in the Springfield Development Code, which were fully analyzed in the staff report and summarized as follows. Criterion A, within UGB and contiguous to the city limits. As previously stated, the subject property is contiguous to the city limits along its north, east and western boundaries. Subject territory is within the city's urban growth boundary and is currently covered by the UF ten overlay. Criterion B, consistent with the policies of the metro plan. Policies twenty-seven, twenty-nine, thirty-three, thirty-four and thirty-five of the twenty thirty comprehensive plans urbanization element are met through this application as the annexed land will be fully within Springfield urban service area. Criterion C, within boundary for minimum level of key urban facilities to be received in a timely and efficient manner. Policies twenty-nine, thirty-one and thirty-two of the twenty thirty comprehensive plans urbanization element are met through this application as well. If annexation is approved, the subject territory can easily obtain key facilities and services from the Filbert Lane and North Street right of way. Again, these facilities and services will include sanitary sewer connection, sub-water and electric service, fire protection services from the Eugene Springfield Fire Department and police services from Springfield Police. The subject site is currently within the Willamette Park and Recre- Recreation District. Criterion D, annexation agreement. An annexation agreement that outlines the applicant's financial responsibilities for provision of public streets and utilities necessary to serve the property is required when there are fiscal impacts associated with the annexation. This application does not have any required public improvements associated with the annexation. Therefore, an agreement is not required. Because all applicable annexation criteria have been met and the annexation will help facilitate bringing this property into the city limits, city staff recommends in the future that the application be considered for approval by council. Thank you, and I am here for any questions.
Are there any questions? All right, I'm gonna open the public hearing. I have no cards for this item.
Appears we have no hands for this item.
I'm gonna go and close the public hearing. This is first reading, no action. Next item, please.
Next item is public hearing number six is annexation of property between seven five two seven and seven six five five Thurston Road, map and tax lot seventeen dash zero two dash three five dash zero zero dash zero three two zero zero and three six zero three and approximately one thousand one hundred seventy-five feet of Thurston Road right of way. This is an ordinance annexing certain territory vacant property between seven five two seven and seven six five five Thurston Road and identified as assessors map seventeen dash zero two dash three five dash zero zero tax slots, tax, tax lots three two zero zero and three six zero three and approximately sixty foot wide by one hu- thousand one hundred seventy-five foot long segment of Thurston Road right of way to the city of Springfield and Willamette Park and Recreation District, withdrawing the same territory from McKenzie Fire and Rescue District, adopting a severability clause and providing an effective date. This is a second reading and Andy Limbert is here for this item.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. This item was opened as a public hearing on June third and at the recommendation of staff, the public hearing and record was held open to this evening's meeting. Staff did receive two items of written testimony that were submitted into the record this evening and you should have copies of them. Um, one was from an adjacent property owner of tax lot number one hundred and staff did discuss the annexation with them at the Development and Public Works counter to clarify that tax lot one hundred, which they own, is not part of the annexation territory. Um, it would, the staff wanted to point out that in drawing a boundary around the area and looking at it from a neighborhood scale, it's difficult to differentiate properties that adjoin it and that have smaller dimensions. And so staff did want to clarify that this tax lot represented by Mr. White is not part of the annexation area this evening. The other testimony that was received from adjacent property owner concerns future development plans for the property. And staff did want to clarify a couple of items of concern that they had noted, which were uh, effects on schools, transportation, transit and other improvements. Uh, when annexations are presented, uh, to staff, they're shared with all the referral agencies, including the Springfield Utility Board, Lane Transit District, Willamette Lane, uh, Springfield School District. So these agencies are aware of future potential for development when annexations occur. There will be subsequent steps once the property is annexed, should it be approved for annexation by the council. Um, development plans would have to be forwarded. There's public opportunities as well. Once those, uh, development plans are presented to see details as to the nature of the development proposed for the site. Staff has general understanding that with the residential zoning of this property, there will be residential dwellings on the site as to the exact configuration and density and that sort of thing, um, that is yet to be seen. And so it's premature for staff to either speculate or to try to share, um, un- unfinished plans uh, that the developer might come forward with. So, um, at this point is only annexation of the property that is being considered this evening. And because there are potential fiscal impacts with this annexation, And because there are potential fiscal impacts with this annexation. An annexation agreement has been prepared and it was actually signed by the applicant. It was entered uh delivered to staff very late, so we made it into the packet this evening. And so council has an opportunity to consider um adopting the ordinance this evening. It does not have to be. Continued to another public hearing date um unless council deems it necessary. So. I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
Are there any questions? The hearing is still open. Um, I'm gonna see if there's any, I don't have any more cards for this item. Neil, do you have any? Hands up.
It appears we have no hands for this item.
I'm gonna go close the public hearing. I think we're ready for motion, Joe.
I am looking, I think this was just a second reading to continue. Yeah, first reading to continue to July one.
No, um, sorry, this is a second reading. I'm, I've mixed up my agenda items. I apologize. This is a second reading. You should close the hearing um and record tonight, which you've done. And then you can vote on the ordinance if you would like. Sorry.
So I think we need to vote on the ordinance. You to draft a quick motion for us because there's not one prepared.
Alright, in the agenda, you can just move to approve the ordinance and then just read that ordinance title.
Right, yeah. Did you get that, Joe?
Got it, yep. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the ordinance annexing certain territorial property. Between. Oh my gosh, now I've got off uh between seventy five twenty seven. And six seventy six fifty five Thurston Road and identified as assess, assess, assessors map. Seventeen dash zero two dash three five zero dash zero zero. Tax lots thirty two hundred and thirty six oh three. And an approximately sixty foot wide by one thousand one hundred and seventy foot long segment of the Thurston Road right of way. To the city of Springfield and Willamette Park and Recreation District withdrawing the same territory from the McKenzie Fire. And Rescue District adopting a severability clause and providing an effective date.
I will second.
Neil, could you call the vote, please?
Yes, Council Weber.
Yes.
Council Mo.
Yes.
Council Rodley.
Yes.
Council Blackwell.
Yes.
Council Doyle.
I.
And Council Pictionary.
Yes, thank you.
Motion passes, six yeses, zero noes. Next item, please.
It's public hearing number seven, an annexation of territory to the city of Springfield. Annex approximately two point four four acres of industrial property in Glenwood. Located at three three one Franklin Boulevard, map seventeen dash zero three dash three four dash three three tax lot one hundred. This is an ordinance annexing certain territory. Property addressed as three 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 one Franklin Boulevard. And identified as assessors map seventeen dash zero three dash three four dash three three. Tax lot one hundred to the city of Springfield and Willamette Park and Recreation District. Withdrawing the same territory from the Glenwood Water District. Adopting a severability clause and providing an effective date. This is a second reading. Andy Limbert is here for this item.
Yes, thank you, Neil, and good evening again, Mayor and Council. Um, staff has uh. Recommended at the June third meeting that this uh item be carried over to the June seventeenth meeting as a public hearing to be continued. And the record held open. Staff has not received a response from the applicant as to the status of their. Concerns about annexation agreement provisions. Um, apparently their council is working on a response to the city. We have not received it. It was not received in time for the packet and therefore. Um, staff is recommending that this item be carried forward. They continue the public hearing. Hold the public record open until the next regular meeting, which is July first. And that's all I have.
Alright, thank you. Any questions for Andy? Alright, I have got no cards for this item. Neil, do we have anybody raising their hand?
No hands for this item.
Okay, then this is second reading. We are going to continue a public hearing until July first, twenty twenty four. Next item, please.
Those are your public hearings for this evening. The next item is business from the audience.
I've got some instructions, so it's just gonna be a minute. Now is the time on the agenda for the council to hear business from the audience. If you have signed up to speak to the council regarding the annexation of property near Game Farm and Pheasant Boulevard. The public hearing and record in that matter were closed following the hearing on June third. While you may speak to the council at this time, the council cannot consider any new information in public comments. Made after the hearing and record were closed. The council will make its decision based on the information that is already in their record. Which includes all public testimony provided to the city council during the public hearing on June third. The reason we cannot consider new testimony tonight is because this process is a land use decision. That has special requirements under the state, under state law. Assistant City Attorney can give us a better explanation of what that process requires.
Thank you, Mayor. This is Christina Cras, Assistant City Attorney. This annexation is a type three process under the Springfield Development Code. Which means that it's a quasi judicial decision. In that the council is acting more like a judge ruling on a specific application. Than um as the council's normal legislative role adopting policies and laws for the city as a whole. Quasi judicial decisions carry certain rights for the applicant and the public under Oregon state law. These rights include an opportunity to be heard at a public hearing. An opportunity to present and rebut evidence at that hearing to an impartial decision maker. In other words, having no pre-hearing or ex parte contacts concerning the question at issue. To a record of the decision that's made and to adequate findings for the decision. The decision must be based on the criteria of approval for that type of application. The council is not allowed to change the criteria. Or give weight to information that doesn't relate to the criteria. To protect these rights of the public and the applicant during an annexation proceeding. There are detailed public notice requirements and specific hearing procedures the council has to follow. The public hearing for the annexation. Between Game Farm Road and Pheasant Boulevard was held on June third and anyone with an interest in the annexation had the opportunity to testify. Or submit evidence at that hearing to the city council. The applicant must always have the right to respond to testimony and evidence. The law requires the applicant has the last word. On June third, the council closed the hearing and the written record. Basically, this means that the council. Has closed the universe of facts and evidence that you will consider in making your final decision on the criteria of approval. To just what was submitted. Up to and during the June third hearing. All the testimony and evidence that were submitted. On or before June third. Are in the record and are addressed in the staff report and findings for tonight. Even though the public can address the council during business from the audience. The council cannot consider any information or testimony that's related to the Game Farm. Road annexation because the hearing and record are closed. Reopening the hearing on the spot to take in new testimony without public notice would also violate state law. Does the council have any questions for me on the, on the hearings process from June third or your obligations tonight?
Not seen any questions. Go ahead.
Just to clarify, so you mentioned the ex parte.
Yeah.
Communications. We've received several emails since June third.
Yes.
Um, I've not responded to any of those. I don't know if others have, but how does that have any impact?
I will address that specifically when we get to that agenda item. I just wanted to be sure that the council understood and the public understands. The um council's hearing procedures on June third, so. As you're taking in business from the audience tonight, what are your obligations?
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Yeah, so let me call the item. She'll go through that. So effectively, what's gonna happen is I will call your card. Um, if you give testimony around um the game for an annexation. The, we're effectively gonna exclude it. I'm still gonna call your card. You still have an opportunity to talk to council if you would like. Um, there's several of them. If you do not want to talk to uh testify, just give me a head nod, no, and then I will move on to the. To the next card since the hearing and record are closed on this item. Uh, David Franklin.
Yeah, my name is David Franklin. I live at three two zero six Raleigh Wood and um. I understand that uh your guys' decision on this is, is hard. I love Springfield. I know that I am not in any of your wards. Uh, I have family members in your wards, friends, church members. They are all in those wards, but I am not. And um. I know that. This piece of property for annexation, it's, it's come up. In the past. And each time it has been shut down. And um. I am just asking uh, you know. Justice for all on this. Uh. Not just one individual, but for all of us. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Alia.
Heather, um, so some of you guys did get an email from me. Um, I'm Alia. I live at thirty one twenty Oriole Street. Uh, we did collect a hundred and seventy signatures um knowing that. The public hearing was over, but we needed to codify our. Opposition to this and you guys will recognize that that is more than just the people who live on these two streets. Um. You know, looking at the agenda packet, um, there was something that the city staff had said in there, which essentially had said. Um. There was an assertion that there will not be any adverse environmental impacts based on the information available. That only can happen if testing is done. And that would be a phase two environmental site assessment. That has not been done to our knowledge. No one has advised of that. No one has told us any testing of that. Um, and you know, some people are familiar with rails to trails and different things like that. We're talking creosote, arsenic, lead. Uh, solvents, herbicides, um. In a sense, I don't know how that assertion can be made as a fact when the testing has not been done. So um, I know you guys can only consider so many things, but looking at the packet that is on your agenda tonight. That assertion only counts essentially if the testing has been done. And while no information has been available, it's because it's never been up for development before. No one has ever considered building on it before. So with that information, um, I hope you guys will consider uh what that means to the people who will live in the area. Um, who will be covered in the dust and the dirt from the possible development if the annexation is approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Janet Barker.
Okay, there we go. Uh, my name is Janet Barker. I live at thirty two eighty four Pheasant Boulevard. Which is uh down near the end where Pheasant turns into Oriole. Uh, bearing in mind. The issues that our neighborhoods raised during um the public testimony on June third. Emails, uh, phone calls, letters. And the petition um that we signed. Bearing those issues in mind that we brought up in those communications. I just have two things I'd like to add. Um. I hope each and every one of you. Were able to physically visit the proposed site. Uh, also that you walked down or drove down Pheasant Boulevard. And walked or drove down uh Raleigh Wood. Very nice homes there. Um. And my feeling is if that sixty foot wide strip of land. Is not wide enough for ingress and egress on the new city street. Then I don't think that strip of land is suitable. For property development. Thank you.
Thank you. Megan Watson.
Um, yeah, my name is Megan Watson. She heard pronouns and I live at thirty three ten Oriole Street. Um, two weeks ago. I joined over twenty of my neighbors in speaking out against this annexation. Um, we heard a lot of moving and passionate testimony about the harm and strife. Annexation and then subsequent development um of these two parcels would cause. As a resident on Oriole, I can speak firsthand about what it's like to have a two-story housing. Um. To have two-story housing and a road in my backyard. Um, floodlights shine into my bedroom windows around the clock. On nice days like today, when you want the windows open, um, I hear people's alarm clocks go off. I hear phones ring, doors slam. All the other intricacies of life. Um, but I bought my house with that knowledge, so. Um, I knew that that was part of the deal, um, and I accepted it. Um, and truly, the only thing I would change about my house is its proximity to that housing complex. Um, that is the only downside to where I live. Um, forty two of my neighbors, many who have spent decades in their homes, will now be subject to these same disturbances. Um, they however, did not buy their homes with that knowledge. Even the ones that have bought them recently were not told about plans for annexation or development, which have been. Um, in consideration and were part of the advertisement of this property when it went to auction. Um. But many of those neighbors. Have cared for and have acted as stewards for the land in question. Um, they've organized and circulated a petition. Um, and they also came here again tonight. Um. All to ask you the same thing, and that's to reject this annexation proposal. Um, so when you think about who. This decision is gonna affect, I want you to think about the people who came here to hear it. Um, and the person. That applied for the annexation, I don't see him in the room. Um, I understand that the land in question does narrowly meet the minimum criteria for annexation. Uh, but my question is this. Does the city of Springfield want to be a champion of land use minimums? Or instead be known for their smart and compassionate neighborhood development? Thank you.
Thank you. B. James. So. No clapping, please.
Well, I prepared it, so I might as well read it. I need to practice anyway. My name is B. James and I live at thirty three twenty five Pheasant Boulevard, right next to where this entire. Uh, development is being planned. And I want to uh address some of the minutes, the responses that uh your staff took time to include in last uh. The six three meeting. So I only have time for addressing three. I have many more concerns about some of the things that were written. Regarding the concerns of the people that spoke at the last meeting. So in response to your claims from the last meeting being not applicable to the annexation application. I have some questions and I understand that you don't have to address my questions, but if in the minutes, that's a part of your procedure. And you can't answer these questions in the next follow-up minutes, that would be wonderful. Regarding historic landmark, uh, I, I provided some documentation that I gave in an envelope for you guys. Um, please see attached documentation regarding historic resource survey listing that cite the lot as contributing historic resource. You stated this section of railway is not listed in the adopted. City of Springfield Historic Landmark Inventory and my documentation shows otherwise. Number two, regarding contamination of the soil, you stated staff consulted the Oregon DEQ. For any local listings of brownfield or otherwise contaminated sites and did not find any records of the subject site. Therefore. Information available indicates that there will not be any adverse environmental impacts to the future residential development. The fact that there are no records does not mean that there is no contamination. How you negate this concern with absolutely no evidence is unconscionable. I request full testing of the soil for the health and safety of all the people and wildlife that would be at risk with disrupting this land. Number three, regarding the narrow road that is only one foot over the required twenty foot. For emergency vehicle safety pass-through, you state. The one-way circulation format proposed for the future development does not apply to emergency access. Therefore, fire and emergency services can be provided to the subject site. In an orderly and efficient manner at the time for future development. Please explain how this will work. Uh, most homes are two-car homes. There will be new housing members that will, that will need to park not only their car. Uh, in their parking lot, but are in their driveway, but also if they have another car on the street. Pheasant um has no sidewalks. We have a very small easement. Uh, so I also want to know what the current rate of traffic flow to Pheasant and Gateway and what the percent increase will be if this development happens. And number four, do you realize the variance is needed for this development will not be met? And will have an adverse impact on the other homes in this district. By approving the annexation, you are acting under the presumption of the variances required to develop this plan, which is out of order. And I guess I'm out of time, so. Uh, in closing, I ask that you please vote no on the annexation.
Thank you. Michael Brim.
Evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Michael Brim. I live at 3203 Raleighwood Avenue. A few months ago, as a member of the neighborhood, I received a notice from the city that you are considering new development as part of a state legislative law, stipulating that a certain percentage of housing in each city has to meet, I'm struggling for the term, but non-car development. Commercial, residential, and business sort of development. And one of the areas on the map that you sent was between Game Farm Road and Martin Luther King Boulevard. We have two parcels there that are currently undeveloped. Those would be great places to build apartments, in my opinion. And I only speak for myself. I'm not here representing anyone else. Compared to the annexation before the council, those two areas would be able to provide far more housing than the 27 units proposed in this development. It's, they have access to bike paths and bus lines. The Riverbend Hospital is right there, also Gateway Boulevard. I've spoken anecdotally to a number of fellow members of the neighborhood about this, and they've all expressed interest and even genuine excitement that this sound, that sounds like a good way to develop the neighborhood and provide more housing in a much more safe and accessible way, because it could be designed so that first responders could have much better access. And in the event of an emergency, the people who would actually live there would have much easier egress. So it'd be safer for everyone. Anyone who is saying that the reason that the people in this neighborhood are against this particular development is just in a, from a case of NIMBYism, that's disingenuous. None of us are saying that. If you wanted to, you have two proposals in front of you. One looks like a really good idea. The other one looks like it will only benefit one person, and that's the developer. And that's not smart planning or development, and that's not going to make our neighborhood or wider community better. So I would ask that you please focus on the one that makes more sense for everyone involved and not try to shoehorn something in that is only going to benefit one person. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Ken.
Excuse me, I hurt my back, so it's a little slow.
Take your time.
Good evening. My name is Ken Malden, and I live at 3241 Pheasant Boulevard. First, I would like to say thank you to those who responded to my email. In one email response, the council member said they would hate it if the county land around where they lived were developed. They would be concerned about the increased traffic, parking issues, et cetera, all of the same issues we have brought up. But the council member mentioned that they are only allowed to look at the criteria and the facts. But in my opinion, the biggest fact is not considered as part of the criteria to help make this decision. Is this annexation in the best interest of the community? The local citizens have voiced that it is not in the best interest of the community. The criteria for approval appears to be severely flawed by not taking into the account what the community wants. The annexation and development may bring in revenue from property taxes, but at the cost of the neighboring community. Many residents live paycheck to paycheck, and with the annexation and development of the property, some residents will not be able to afford the increase in property taxes and services, forcing some to have to sell their homes because they can no longer afford it. The criteria about what is in the best interest of the community and the surrounding neighborhoods should always be considered, even though it's not part of the criteria that you guys are listing. Thank you.
Thank you. Dean Burkhart.
Yeah, go ahead. I'm Dean Burkhart, and my wife Karen Burkhart, we live at 1244 Del Rose Drive, and we're here to talk about a safety issue. Go ahead, Karen.
I came to talk about a safety issue. I was a roundabout on Hayden Bridge and Harlow Road, and having met Brian this evening for the first time, and his response before the meeting was that this issue would be taken care of in a prompt manner.
Karen has talked about the safety issue with representatives of Public Works Department for several years. And to confirm your recognition of Brian, it's been taken care of promptly, usually the next day after she called. This year it didn't, and Brian explained, and we understand that the reason for this year, the delay, is the ice storm, which affected us all. My background is in engineering, and Karen and I are both master gardeners. And one of the things that we're taught as master gardeners is right plant, right place. So as an engineer, in my job, I'm retired now, but we looked for the root cause, and the root cause is not the Public Works Department, and especially not Brian. The root cause is the shrubbery that's there, and this is not in the center of the circle or roundabout. It's beside the roads coming up to it, grows too fast, too tall, and it really needs to be replaced. So we were here to let you know, if you didn't already know of the problem. We use that roundabout basically every day. We went through it four times today, and it's a problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Brandy Hartman.
Hi, you've met me before. My name is Brandy Hartman, and I actually don't live anywhere near where this problem for Pheasant Street is. The reason I came was I didn't like the idea of too much going on where I live at, out in Thurston. We were thinking that low income out where we are at, which is far out 75th, is not really a good idea because they couldn't access the traffic issues. But after hearing about Pheasant Street, I was quite disappointed in what people were was going on for those poor people who live there, because unfortunately, that strip is extremely small, and it's, I've driven there. I got to see it. I have family in the area and friends in the area. And I went and checked it out because it was like, well, how small is this piece of property that they're trying to put a bunch of houses on? I've been there twice in the last week. It's ridiculous. Are you kidding? Even if you put, actually, I saw it today, there's a trail down it with a car, and you can see how a car drove down the middle of it. Well, there's hardly enough room for a car to drive on either side of those two tire marks. How are you going to get a big fire truck down there? How's it going to be safe? Unfortunately, I hate to be disrespectful, but it is the stupidest idea I've ever seen. I know people who live on River Road where this, these kind of small little areas go in, and there looks great on paper. If we're worried about low income and actually getting the kind of housing we need in Springfield, this is not the place to do it. There is not enough room to have a driveway that actually faces, you'd have to pull it into the side. It's the lack of housing that would actually go in here is ridiculous. The amount of how close you'd have to have it to the fences, and yeah, you're going to have to put windows somewhere. Even if you put them on the sides, they're still looking at people's homes. We had this happen by our house when I was growing up. Yeah, they put them, the city said it was going to be fine. They're not going to look into our properties. Well, the side windows do. Yes, they do. It's not going to be good for anyone who lives there. Nobody wants it. The only people who want it are the ones that are going to make money off of it. If you want it, sorry, developer, but please take it back to Eugene. We're not Eugene. We're Springfield. There is tons of land in Springfield. And a lot of the homes that have been going in and the properties that have been developed lately, none of them, except for the one on 28th Street, has apartments. The only place I've seen in the last few years of big mass, lower-income kind of housing is there. That all the other ones I've seen in town, I've driven around to look. There's hardly any. So please, this is ridiculous. It's just going to make somebody money. That's the only reason they want in there. It's not about helping people. It's not about helping the city, getting decent housing. There's tons of housing. This is just crap. I'm sorry to say it, but it really is. And forcing it in and telling these people, it's going to be great for them? Put it in your neighborhood, please. Not to be rude, but please. This is, I'm sorry, but not trying to be mean, but honestly, what you're doing is mean. Sorry, that's my feelings.
Thank you. Harvest.
Hello, my name is Harvest. I live at 3325 Pheasant Avenue, and I know that this is not about like any strict facts or anything, as the, I believe, the court attorney or one of the people over here.
City attorney.
City attorney noted. So I don't want to talk too much about that. I'm not super smart, so I don't know a lot about facts. But I do know like what it feels like to be here, and I know it doesn't feel good. I, you guys get to make the decision. I mean, I've only lived at this location for a couple of months now. We recently bought, I live there with my mom, and we recently bought the place. But as far as I'm aware, I'm not allowed to vote for any of the wards that are currently making this decision. And like, that doesn't feel good. As far as I'm aware, like, the people that make the decisions are supposed to represent the people that those decisions impact. Like, I don't know how that's possible. And if you're, and you are sitting up there and you get to make this decision, I would ask you, like, if you were, just like how I asked you last time, how would it feel if you were sitting here? How would you think that feels to sit here and not be able to even vote for the people that get to make this decision for us? You also said that this is like, not a normal policy decision, and it's almost like a judicial decision based off a certain criteria and facts. And I understand that. But if that was the only thing that you were intended to consider, why am I even allowed to speak right now? Like, why is, why are you making this decision at all? Why, why would, why isn't this just some person or a robot in an office checking off the box, right? And it's because, at least I'd like to think, somebody really smart, probably a lot smarter than me, knew that to have this platform to speak and to talk to real people, right, because humans like to talk to other humans. I think that's the reason why I'm getting this platform today and why it should be part of your decision, even if it's not the core part of this decision that you get to make today or some other day. I think that it really should be part of why you consider it. And maybe officially, that's not anything you're allowed to do, but maybe as people, you can feel what I'm feeling and what all the people that are here are feeling, because normally, you know, not this, I imagine there's not this many people that come to these meetings. I mean, maybe some, but probably not a roomful. And not articles written about it and everything that has happened because of this, you know. It's not a smart development. It's not what is best for the city or best for the people. And we're here to speak to you about that. And that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the last card that I have. Neil, do we have anybody online?
Does not appear like we have hands online for this item. Oh, we do have one. Just came up. Carrie Bartlett. And Carrie, you should be able to unmute your microphone.
Thank you. My name is Carrie Bartlett. I don't see how I can put my video up, so it's just going to be my name. I live at 3107 Raleighwood Avenue. I just purchased the house here last year. I am literally on the corner of Game Farm and Raleighwood. And I noticed a lot of traffic, and it sounds as though that was talked about last time in session. And unfortunately, I was out of the state when that session happened. And I would like to just point out that on Game Farm, we have a tremendous amount of fast traffic going down that road. People may be coming from the hospital or somewhere. They're just racing down Game Farm. And if we add another housing area with a tremendous number of cars coming down Game Farm, I think we're going to have an increased potential for accidents and increased potential for all kinds of injuries going on in our neighborhood. And I just want to point that out to everyone, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item is any business from the city council.
Is there any business or announcements from the council? I think we're good. Next item, please. Next item is business from the city manager. Item number one is Community Development Block Grant substantial amendments, and Aaron Feifield is here for this item.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm here tonight for your consideration of a proposed substantial amendments to prior year Community Development Block Grant action plans. I brought this item first to you during work session on April 22nd and mentioned that the city had previously awarded CDBG funds to Catholic Community Services of Lane County's Oasis Day Center Construction Project for homeless families with children. That project has experienced delays and is currently not ready to proceed. The city is at risk of losing these funds if they aren't spent quickly, and amending these plans would reallocate funds toward projects that we determine are ready to proceed. As outlined in your packet, the city followed our CDBG public participation process, publishing the proposed amendments for public comment, emailing interested parties about the proposal. I'm sorry. The Community Development Advisory Committee held a public hearing at their May 29th meeting. We heard from nine people during public comment and the public hearing. So based on that testimony and the needs identified, the committee has recommended that the city reallocate $470,494 from the CCS construction project and reallocate that funding to three projects as listed in your packet. The first, this would be repaying our existing Section 108 loan of approximately $165,430 and change. This would allow us to spend CDBG funds immediately while still receiving the loan repayments over the next five years. The second project would be $259,000 towards supporting a human services delivery system. The CDAC heard from Plaza de Nuestra Comunidad, a newly combined nonprofit of Central Latino Americano Downtown Languages and Puerto de la Familia. Plaza is a Latinx serving culturally specific bilingual community service provider in Lane County and has just purchased a building along Mohawk, in the Mohawk area, to establish a community wellness center. These funds would go toward non-construction costs, such as architecture and engineering costs, as they are renovating their building. And finally, the third activity, about approximately $46,063, and I'll say and $0.65, which is not located in your packet. My apologies for those doing the math. But that amount would be to promote economic development through micro enterprise business support. Also detailed in your packet, Lane Community College, the Early Childcare Business Accelerator Program offers business training and support for new and expanding in-home childcare businesses in Lane County. This funding would provide a grant of $5,000 per graduate of this program with an in-home childcare business here in Springfield. To note, during the public comment period, we also heard from four local low-income affordable housing providers expressing the need for funds for capital improvements to existing rental projects here in Springfield, including roof replacements, ductless HVAC installation, and staircase repairs. I will add, as part of our ongoing look at CDBG funding availability, we're anticipating about another $200,000 or $300,000 that may be needed to be reallocated this fall. Again, these may be from projects that are currently not spending down funds as quickly as we anticipated. The CDAC is recommending the three projects above for the funding before you tonight, but they are also recommending that the council, when the time comes, reallocate those additional funds this fall toward the rental rehab project. So that would allow the city to put out an RFP to solicit asks from existing providers. um, the city to put out an RFP to solicit asks from existing providers, affordable housing development providers, um, to be able to rehab their existing rental projects. Um, and this would give staff time to issue the RFP, but also allow us to put out CDBG, CDBG funds quickly on non-construction projects first. Um, so that's, what's before you? Okay, here for questions.
Joe.
Yes, thank you. I, I, please correct me if I'm wrong, but we had discussion in regards to, in particular, these small, quote unquote, small business loans for in-home childcare of up to five thousand dollars per incident or per case or whatever. It was my understanding that there was not the support for that. If, and, and I know I, I talked to the mayor about this. We've had discussions about this. And it seems like we wanted to know more in regards to, okay, what do we expect for an outcome? What is, what kind of, uh, accountability is there, et cetera? I, I just don't, in some of these programs you're describing, I don't recall a lot of support for. And I'm, I'm puzzled, frankly.
So for the, uh, in-home childcare request, um, that request, uh, previously came through the CDBG's, um, fiscal year twenty-five annual action plan process. Um, the CDAC did not recommend funding. Um, it was brought before council and council again, um, prioritized other projects. I didn't hear the lack of support for the program. What I heard was the priority for, um, the city's home repair program, down payment assistance program, um, contributions to Lane County Social Services and Grant Administration. Um, so when we went through this process to, um, amend, reallocate prior year funding, um, sort of the question gets reopened, um, and, uh, folks can comment. And that is where, uh, LCC came in again, um, and put that request forward. Um, I am not aware of concern, so I'm struggling. I guess I'm hearing it for the first time at this moment.
Well, not hearing support doesn't mean there is support. Meaning, there may be folks that were not supportive of it. And then after it was prioritized, there was support for that list. But that doesn't mean that there was, there was support or a, a green light to go ahead and move forward if there was funding for those other things without further discussion. That make sense?
It doesn't. Um, but I guess what I can, but if it's, if it's helpful, this is, given that this is an entirely sort of new, um, allocation process, this was the city's Community Development Advisory Committee hearing the needs, um, through public comment and through the public hearing. And from that list, making a recommendation to council to move that forward. So that is what is before you tonight.
And, and I haven't seen that list, so to speak. I mean, I've seen, I see the motion.
Um, the packet there, I don't know if you see the packet, there's a table, um. So the table, the, the column on the far right side, um, is the proposal to reallocate the funds.
And usually we have discussion in regards to, especially in a work session, that goes over a different allocation of funding and where that money should go and allows council to have some input. This is a list that says, okay, this, we've got this money, this, we're, uh, staff and a committee is gonna say this is how we're gonna spend it. And now we're being asked, um, hey, yes, we'll vote on it, yes or no. And to me, that isn't allowing council to be part of that decision-making other than saying no or yes. And so I'm, I'm really, again, I'm quite surprised that some of these are on this list that council hadn't had a tr- a chance to prioritize these as far as even numerically prioritize on that earlier conversations during those, during the, when we're talking about the CDBG funding. So, uh, or CDAC recommendations. So that's just, that's my, that's my comment. So Mary, you'll have, you'll, Mary, you'll have to find someone. Well, you'll have to find either someone else to make that motion or I can make that motion to not adopt.
Let's go Nancy first and then we'll go to Cory.
Um, I would just, I do recall the council having some discussion around the need for childcare in our community. I, I don't think that is a necessarily a surprise. I, um, I don't uh, recall a specific direction from council, but I do, uh, recall a conversation about it. Um, I think probably the best way to judge interest among council members is to make a motion. And then you can, if, if the motion is sustained and then you have a discussion in public as a, as an elected body, and then you call the vote. And that's kind of how the sausage is made.
Thank you. Um, and I do recall the, um, this project coming before us. And I know that I have expressed interest in it and support for it. I don't remember anyone saying they were not supportive of supporting small businesses and childcare in Springfield. Um, I also remember us talking about the repayment piece. I remember a very robust conversation that included Counselor Pictionary on that one. Um, then the one that is new is, I think because it is a newly purchased building is the Plaza de Nuestra Comunidad pa- piece. Um, and again, you know, I haven't been on this council for a hundred years, but I have seen repeatedly that we move these things through our committees who then make a recommendation, whether it's CDAC or the Planning Commission, and it goes through this process that comes to us. And then we have a discussion and say, yes, we support it or don't. Um, I for one do support all of these, um, and would be interested in hearing what other people think.
All right. Now that we've got ourselves kind of wrapped around the axle here, um, I've got questions about some of these. I'd like to see a little bit more information about them. I mean, obviously from, you know, from a council perspective, if, you know, people want to vote tonight, we can do that. But if we've got, I don't know what the timeline to get these complete is, um, like the, you know, conceptually, the building looks fine, but like the, that one and, um, details around the, the childcare piece. Um, I know I've seen like a flyer about it at some point. Um, that doesn't mean I haven't seen information. I think just getting a little bit more information about it and then revisiting this discussion so that we can kind of figure out what, what we would want to do would make, would make sense to me.
Uh, so Mayor, I, I do have a question on that, um, and I maybe directed to staff as far as timeline. I think what we were probably attempting to do is as usual, piling everything into the, the last of the fiscal year. So apologies for that. And we, uh, appreciate your patience. So, um, I will talk to staff about this offline and see if we can find a spot to revisit this in the fall. Uh, Erin, is there, is there something we would miss or something I would need to do over recess? As far as, I don't want to hold up other projects that you might be working on.
I'll say the intent for bringing this forward, um, was the fact that we have, we have nearly half a million dollars in CDBG funds that aren't moving um, and are at risk of being taken back by HUD. Um, so I do acknowledge working within trying to get things in before recess is what has probably squeezed some of this. Um, we did come during work session, um, to sort of ask the question, can we amend, uh, the funding from one project to another? And we'll go through our process to put a call out. Um, and council said yes. Um, there was not enough time to put an RFP out, um, in that sense. Um, and so staff was feeling the non-construction projects were, um, we've got community pri- community partners, um, that are doing good work that are established in the community, um, asking for funds. I'm happy to bring more information back, um, for the July one consideration. I would say at minimum, um, if, as I heard, support for the section one oh eight payment, I would like to move that forward so that we can proceed with getting that payment and being able to move CDBG funds.
Yeah, I, I think we could probably, we, we can probably do that one tonight. Um, I think, I think I have questions about the grants just because they're federal dollars, right? And, you know, I, I think I just want to read it, sort of like the program sort of soup to nuts and just spend a little bit of time of thinking about it. And then, you know, the building, you know, again, we've done these types of buildings before, conceptually, you know, it makes sense, but I just want a little bit more facts and a couple of bullet points on, on the paper. Um, Joe.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. And I, I agree. I'm not like, you know, getting stuck in the mud and saying, no, there are all this stuff. And, and Erin, if there's, you said the program, is it one oh eight or, or section one oh eight or something like that? But you just mentioned if that's, uh, time sensitive and you mentioned that there is a, uh, time constraint with the HUD money, then I get it. Um, but I just want to, if we can have time, like the mayor said, to get some information together. So we see if we want, I would like to see what other options are out there instead of giving a laundry list and saying, okay, well, we gotta spend this money. And fact is, it's still tax money. And I don't want to see it just thrown into the wind. I want to be able to have some explanation and some more information. So, um, I'm, I'm pretty sure I can make a, create a motion if you could clarify that, Erin, with me in regards to that particular program you just mentioned.
Sure. I've mentioned it, um, during our April twenty second meeting and I'll mention it again tonight. So in two thousand nine, um, the city accessed what's called a section one oh eight loan program through HUD that allowed us to borrow four hundred and fifty thousand dollars on behalf of Nedco in order to help them purchase their downtown building. And in return, they put four units of low-income qualified housing above. Um, since then, Nedco has been paying back that loan to the city um, twice a year. And we've been taking those loan repayments and sending them on to HUD to satisfy that loan. There are five more years on that loan. Um, we have the option to use our CDBG funds in order to pay off that loan right now. We would continue to receive those loan repayments though, from Nedco to fully satisfy the loan.
Got it. No, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mayor.
So Joe, before you, before you try to form that into a motion, I, I want to just make sure I call, see if anybody else has a comment that they want to make. Because before we get too carried away here, is it, anybody else have questions or comments? Um, okay.
Can, can I just, before, um, I guess what I heard from Counselor Pictionary right now is wanting to know, quote unquote, what else is out there. Um, and that, I think, gives me pause. Um, we did follow the city's adopted public participation process here in terms of allowing for thirty days for the public to comment and holding a public hearing to receive input. Um, so I, yeah, I maybe I'll work with the city manager to figure out if there's something further there. Um, but I'm also happy to provide more information about what has been provided and who did testify and what that information was. Um, I think that is where I'd like to focus my energy, but welcome to, um, input.
I completely understand, Erin, and apologize for putting y'all through this. But I just need, I mean, as, as you know me well enough to know that I want to be comfortable where I make, I make decisions. And I'm not into, uh, waste of taxpayer monies and I want accountability and that's my fiduciary responsibility and I really take it very seriously. But I do not want to be a stick in the mud or, or, or a baton in the spokes to stop things. I don't want things to get messed up because of me not being good with, with voting. But, um, so I would be happy, maybe with, uh, with help of the city attorney to quickly maybe formulate some sort of motion that makes sure to cover that. Or Sean?
Well, you have, you, you have about, uh, fifteen or thirty seconds because Cory had a comment she wanted to jump in for. She's really buying you time.
Is that, is that what I'm doing? Um, I think, uh, and I appreciate you opening up for other comments because I think a couple of things. One, we don't always do such a great job of tracking what we've talked about and things that have come before us. And I appreciate Erin's, um, diplomacy and reminding us that we have had the conversations about it and that the information has been in places and in packets. So I think there's that. I think the other thing that I'm feeling is when you open it up for other comments, i- it's really, Joe has an opinion, I have an opinion. And maybe you have a middle opinion. And so I, I think that it's, if I was sitting in Erin's shoes and this is me just being really speculative, I'd be like, I still don't know what the direction is to go with this, right? Um, and also to just, one of the things, and I'm, and I'm feeling a little bit cranky, uh, is that we have processes that we use and then sometimes we say we don't like that process. And then other times we say we want to use those processes. So that's the piece for me. It's like, if we have a process and we put people and we put staff and we say, we're gonna do this process. And then it comes and we're like, well, we don't necessarily like it or we weren't paying attention. We want to do something different. So I think that we have to stick with our processes.
And I will take the midpoint. Um, I think from my perspective, the direction would be move forward the loan, which we, I think we all can agree that we do tonight. And just bring, just bring more information back, right? I know we've talked about some of these projects at, at some point. But like seeing a refresher on what they are, where they came from, some of the feedback from the committee and just getting curious about the discussion that's happened so far, um, would, would be hel- would, would be helpful. Because if we rewound the way that my memory, uh, is that I, I think I have questions about whether or not grant programs, well, I shouldn't even ask my question. I don't know enough about this program to really feel like comfortable forming an opinion yet. And that, and we should, we should just leave it about that because I, I just simply, we need some more information. Victoria?
So I'm just trying to understand, Erin, um, on the different, um, bullet points that we have here is the, I think, what is it? The one, two, third one down, which says that the, uh, accessibility bathrooms at City Hall, is that part of what would have been approved tonight with this? Because that also seems like an important thing.
Good question. Um, so that is part of, um, including what was part of the public comment period. So listing it. Um, the, um, talked to city staff, we did not receive any detailed information about it. And then during the CD, the CDAC's discussion, they did not recommend it. So it did not, it would not have been, um, included, but it's your decision tonight. Of just, including it to say it got brought up.
Yeah, I'm just looking at that and thinking that's something that's a long-term, like, something that could really make a positive effect on our community and accessibility for people with disabilities in City Hall. I know having a mom that had, was in a wheelchair for many years and not being able to go a lot of places, that's a pretty big deal, especially being able to access their government. Um, and so, um, so they, so they, um, wanted to do the, um, early childhood care accelerator program and the Plaza de Nue- Nu- Nu- Nuestra?
Plaza, I think for sure.
And then also the, um, the one oh eight loan.
Yeah, and I, I will add, um, and I, um, I'm realizing as I'm reading through the packet, it is not here, um, or it's mentioned briefly. Um, is the commentary about the rental rehab for, um, existing income-qualified affordable housing rental developments? Um, and if I'm, if I'm recalling Counselor Pictionary, that is what I'm remembering. You and Counselor Doyle sort of acknowledging to say, hey, if there's sort of neighborhood, um, improvements that could be made, we, um, that is something we would like to move forward. Exactly. And that was a discussion that happened at the committee and sort of seeing all of this need, their recommendation is that the funding that'll come be made available in the fall, um, to prioritize that. To prioritize, uh, that project for that later funding. Um, I will say, I probably maybe didn't stress it here, but certainly stressed it with the CDAC that we are here to discuss is like, how can we move these, this funding forward quickly? Um, and so I think they took that and sort of looking at the timing it takes to RFP out and sort of conduct the environmental review and then move forward with contracting on a construction project is more intensive and say, let's move that later and let's get the funding out for projects that could use them now. Um, I am recognizing there was information provided to the CDAC that was not include this, included in this packet about those projects that they, um, were discussing. So to your point, Mayor, um, yes, I, I hear you and I, I'm thinking about the future, but, um, I am curious, would July one be amenable to bring this back to you with that additional? Or we talk?
Well, hopefully we will, we will try to figure out how to get it in July one. Um, Nancy has the ability this time of year to somehow make time, which I think is a marketable skill for city managers. Nancy, did you have something to add?
Just really quickly, um, to Counselor Pictionary's question about a motion that he could put forward that we could, something we could knock out tonight. Oh, it looks like great. So, uh, Christina sent that. I was, I was just gonna say you could use, um, page three of four. The first bullet item is, is, um, the one that pertains to HUD and the section eight. When, um, excuse me, the section one oh eight loan. Um, and that can be fairly simple, but I'm sure the city attorney made it more complicated.
I just recommend that you, um, you can, I sent it to Allison who hopefully could put it in the, I don't have access to the Zoom chat, but could potentially send that or just.
But could potentially send that or display it on screen. But um, I would recommend that you just use the motion that's in the packet with the caveat of. Moving to approve the proposed substantial amendments, the Community Development Block Grant Fiscal Year, twenty twenty two actual annual action plan. And the amount of, and then that amount that's in the packet for twenty twenty two and fiscal year twenty twenty three annual action plan. And the amount of um one hundred and forty eight thousand two dollars to increase supply of affordable housing. And authorize city manager to execute all those documents. I do want to be a little more precise with this motion because it relates to federal HUD funding. And they generally like to see specific motions.
They always seem very precise. Do we have a, Allison, do we have something? Oh, we, we're going to pause for station identification and see if we can get it up there so that Councilor Pictionary can read it.
And I don't, yeah, and I don't, there's chat function on this, so we'll have to do it up on the screen.
I sent it to you in Teams? Sorry.
You sent it to me or?
No, um, they're, they're working it out, Joe.
Okay, I'll just stand by. Thank you, sorry.
I appreciate everybody's patience with this. You can tell by eight thirty, we get a little bit more punchy around here.
The other option is I could read the motion and then a member of the council, if they agree with that motion, could say so moved, if that would be quicker. So the motion would be to approve the proposed substantial amendments to the Community Development Block Grant Fiscal Year twenty twenty two. Annual Action Plan in the amount of seventeen thousand four hundred and twenty eight dollars and thirty five cents. And fiscal year twenty twenty three annual action plan in the amount of one hundred and forty eight thousand and two dollars. To increase the supply of affordable housing and authorize the city manager to execute all documents needed to give effect to the city's agreement. With the US Department of Housing and Urban Development for these funds.
So moved.
Second.
Neil, could you call a vote, please?
Yes, Counselor Weber.
Yes.
Counselor Mo.
Yes.
Counselor Rodley.
Yes.
Counselor Blackwell.
Yes.
Counselor Doyle.
I think so.
Yes.
And Counselor Pictionary.
Yes, thank you.
Motion passes, six yeses, zero noes. Next item, please.
Next item, under business from the city manager's annexation of territory to the city of Springfield. Annex two point three four acres of residential property located at map seventeen dash zero three dash two do, two dash one three. Tax lot two zero eight zero one and map seventeen dash zero three dash two two dash one two. Tax slot zero two one zero zero and concurrently annex a segment of Game Farm Road and Pheasant Boulevard. Um, Tom Severs is here for this item.
All right, before you go, Tom, I've got uh some additional comments introducing the item. Now is the time in the agenda for the council to conduct a second reading on the proposed annex approximately two point three acres of property. In the area of Game Farm Road and uh and Pheasant Boulevard and adjacent segments of streets of the right of way. The council conducted a public hearing on this matter on June third, twenty twenty four, and the council closed the hearing in written record. Because this is a land use application, the council can only consider information submitted into the record at or before the hearing was closed. As a council, we've received several emails from interested people after the record was closed. And we've heard additional testimony during the business, business from the audience. I'm going to turn it over to the Assistant City Attorney to explain our options regarding these comments.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to um give an overview of the uh emails you received outside of the public comment period. Um, and some brief analysis on um really identifying that those are concerns that have already been raised. Are already in the record and addressed in the staff report findings. And then um also identify for you some of the issues raised that are not relevant to criteria of approval for the annexation. So first, there was a June twelfth email from Aaliyah Beta. And I apologize in advance for any mispronunciations, um, that included a petition of residents in the area opposing the annexation. This email raised many issues that were already raised by area residents during the public hearing process on June third. Including privacy concerns, traffic safety, environmental concerns, solar setbacks and historic resources. These issues were identified in the record and have been responded to in the findings from staff in the updated staff report that Tom will present in a moment. Other issues can, um, for example, crime that may originate with new, with new housing. And jurisdictional concerns regarding city authority over annexations are not relevant to the criteria of approval for annexations. Although these issues were also raised on the June third hearing. There was a June thirteenth email from B. James, which raised general neighborhood opposition and generalized concerns regarding infrastructure. Infrastructure to serve the site to the level required for an annexation approval is addressed in the staff report and findings. Under state law, the city cannot deny an annexation application or housing development proposal on the basis of neighborhood opposition. Or effect on property values. These issues are not relevant to the criteria of approval. I'm aware of at least um one city council response to this public comment that was sent via email. I reviewed the substance of that response and it was to reiterate that the council must base its decisions on criteria of approval. And that the decision must be unbiased, which is accurate. The response did not include any information not already in the record of the annexation. Um, and did not include anything irrelevant to the criteria of approval. There was a June fifteenth email from Ken Malden. And this issue, uh, email raised an issue related to the location of a fence between the um residence property. And the proposed annexation area. This is a um private property line dispute that is a civil matter. That the city does not take any action in either in the annexation approval process or outside of that during the development review process. It is not relevant to criteria of approval for annexations. And then additionally tonight, you heard, um, I'm going to break this down into sort of four themes. Um, sorry, five themes of what you heard. Most of the comments first were restating issues raised on June third. And these have been addressed in the staff report similar to those issues raised in the petition. Some comments you heard tonight expressed disagreement with the proposed findings based on evidence that's already in the record. The council can feel free to ask staff questions related to the proposed findings before you make your decision. But those questions and your findings should be based on testimony submitted on or before June third. And not specifically on disagreement with those findings that you heard tonight. Second, there were several references to the petition submitted on June twelfth and general lack of public support. Again, neighborhood supporter opposition is not a criteria of approval for annexations to the city of Springfield. The purpose of holding the public hearing is to solicit public input on the criteria of approval. And whether the property, for example, can be served with the key minimum urban facilities and services. Not to gain a, a collect remonstrances against the annexation or disagreement or disapproval or approval. Um, of the annexation based on other factors. You heard general comments taking issue with the criteria of approval as not being appropriate um criteria to apply. You must apply the criteria that apply to this annexation tonight. But in your legislative role outside of a specific application, you do have authority to ask questions about criteria of approval. Um, to explore what those criteria ought to be. They must be consistent with statewide planning rules. Um, and one of those is that we maintain an adequate supply of developable property for housing needs in our community. And we do have a deficit of um housing in our community. There was uh comments that infrastructure would be easier or less costly to provide in other locations. Or skepticism of whether the city's development criteria of approval could be met in the future. These are also not relevant to the criteria for annexations. The criteria looks at whether the key urban facilities and services at a minimum level can be provided to the property. In a timely, orderly and efficient manner. And those, that is the only criteria around providing infrastructure. It does not look at whether it's more costly to provide it in this location than another location. Also does not look at whether specific development standards can be met at a later time. As long as minimum urban facilities and services can be provided. And then last, there were um issues raised that were similar to the June third hearing that are not relevant to criteria of approval. Um, that are also addressed in the staff report as irrelevant, such as noise concerns from surrounding new residential property. Impacts on property values and jurisdictional concerns with county versus city representation. So my recommendation to the council tonight is that you um specifically exclude the testimony you heard tonight from your consideration. Again, most of what was shared is already reflected in the record and open to council consideration because it was shared on June third. And in written comments submitted June third. And the remainder of the testimony is not relevant to the specific criteria of approval for annexations. Which you're obligated to make your decision based off of. Are there any questions for me about that? Explanation.
Are there any questions? All right. Have any counselors had other contacts, contacts about this application? Outside of the public hearing in written record? So what would be ex parte contact and we'll go down by ward order. Michelle?
No ex parte communication.
No ex party communication.
No ex parte communication.
Uh, I was contacted by Mr. Ganson by telephone and I did speak with him after the June third.
So I would recommend that um you either confirm that that information is um already in the record of the application. From Mr. Ganson or um that it, you will not consider it in your decision tonight.
I will not consider it's already in the record. Actually, can I just say what it?
Absolutely.
He asked me if it would be worth it to write a letter to the council and I told him that would be at his discretion.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I, it was already brought up, uh, the letter or the response that I had to be. And then I also responded to Ken. Similarly, it will not affect my decision. It was clarification only.
I have had no ex parte contact.
I've had ex parte contact with Councilor Commissioner Level. He asked about the status of this hearing and I shared the basic facts of when we were, when we were. Uh, continuing this meeting tonight with him. Yes.
Sorry, I did actually speak with Commissioner Level as well. Um, it does not impact my decision tonight. I think that general communications with other elected officials about the process or the status of the hearing. Um, are not about the merits of the application would not be considered ex parte contacts.
Yeah, and I will confirm it was not about any of the merits of the application. It was more timing and some of the facts around it. At this time, the council is excluding from the record all testimony that was submitted to us in writing after June third or in tonight's public. Tonight during business from the audience. The written record and public hearing remain closed. And the council will not consider any testimony in making its decision on the application. The council will consider all comments and testimony that were provided at the public hearing and before the record was closed. And responses to those comments that are included in the staff report and findings. Tom Seaver, Senior Planner, will now provide us with a report on the updated findings. Tom?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. I am Tom Severs again with the uh current planning section. We're here tonight for the second reading of an ordinance to annex in approximately two point three four acre area. That includes two tax lots in northwest Springfield, along with two segments of public right of way. Let me get the. Sorry, um, you will be hearing about the updated information in the staff report that resulted from the prior hearing and public testimony. Just going to pause for a moment for the presentation. As you may recall, the proposed annexation area is highlighted in yellow. And consists of two tax slots and two segments of Pheasant Boulevard and Game Farm Road. Um, much of the testimony on June third spoke to the future development plans of the site. Which I have briefly addressed in the staff report, but will not be speaking to tonight as it does not have bearing on the annexation approval criteria. However, there are some points of testimony that address the approval criteria, which I will speak to in order to illuminate council. Uh, first, there was a comment claiming that the property is not contiguous to the city limits. Staff believes the comment was referring to the proposed private street as not being contiguous to the city limits. Um, as can be seen on this slide, though, the boundaries of the annexation area are clearly abutting and contiguous to the city limits. Next, there was testimony expressing concerns about the one-way circulation and emergency access to the site. As can be seen on this slide, the closest fire station is Station Number Five, located approximately eighteen hundred feet south of the annexation area. Staff had further conversations with Fire Marshal's Office where they confirmed that both the location of the fire station. And the pro- proposed private street width is sufficient for emergency response. And also that the emergency apparatus would not have to abide by the one-way flow of traffic, that it could access it in two, two directions. Lastly, uh, one residence's testimony referred to uh the nineteen ninety two gateway refinement plan. This property is in fact in the gateway refinement plan, which I will continue to refer to as the GRP, just for brevity. However, as detailed in the staff report, there are no limiting or otherwise prohibitive criteria. That would prevent this annexation or future development. From taking place on the subject site. I will speak to each point made by the testimony on the goals and policies of the GRP. First point, maintain the liv- livability and quality of existing residential neighborhoods as new development occurs. This is goal seven of the community and economic development element on page eight of the GRP. The goals of this element intend to balance the refinement plan areas' needs. With those of a larger Springfield and metropolitan community as the area experienced transition from rural to urban conditions. Its importance to generating jobs. The regional significance of its commercial and industrial resources. And the need to preserve key assets and features that are intrinsic to a high quality of life. The goals predominantly refer to economic growth and development in the GRP area. For which these goals intend to buffer the residential neighborhoods from economic development. In this context, goal seven's intent is to buffer the residential neighborhoods from economic development, not further residential development. Second point, quote, ensure efficient and safe transportation systems in and around residential areas. Promote walking and bicycling as alternative modes of travel by providing pathway connections between residential areas and other important destinations. End quote. This is goal eight of the residential element on page nine of the GRP. Staff and associated outside agencies have taken every necessary measure to ensure this goal is met. Especially as it relates to the safe functioning of intersections where most transportation conflicts arise. Much of the public testimony surrounded the lack of space for sidewalks in the future development and the inability to promote. Safe walking and bicycling on surrounding streets. While this is a matter to be fully reviewed in a development application, the concept thus far includes a private roadway. Built to urban standards with sidewalk on the north side of the proposed street. And as it concerns surrounding streets, the city is in discussions with Lane County. To explore the transition of county roads to urban roads as development occurs. And improvements are made to the existing transportation infrastructure to bring them into compliance with urban standards. Third point, the historic resources element of the GRP identified historic features throughout the refinement plan area. It should be noted that this section of railway is not listed in the adopted City of Springfield Historic Landmark Inventory. For the purposes of the refinement plan only, significant historic resources are classified as significant. Goal five historic resources as designated by the state. Next slide, please. The historic resources survey listing located on page forty of the GRP lists the abandoned Southern Pacific Railroad Spur. Resource number eleven highlighted on that page as a contributing historic resource, not a significant goal five historic resource. Policy two encourages onsite retention of significant goal five historic resources. However, it states that moving structures is allowed. In this case, and being that it is not a significant goal five structure. All rail infrastructure was removed more than forty years ago prior to the creation of the GRP. The policies largely apply to significant goal five historic resources. Even so, they do not call for outright preservation. Uh, but encourage retention of the resources and representation via commemorative plaques or similar methods of memorialization. When a historic resource cannot be retained. Policy three established that the historical coordinator shall explore the feasibility of and funding for the installation of commemorative plaques. Marking three sites, one of which is the Southern Pacific Rail Corridor. I walked the segment of former railroad last week from its terminus at the LTD station on South A. Uh, to the roundabout on Harlow Road and did not find an existing plaque. So as staff liaison to the historic commission, I will present this matter to the commission to take the necessary steps in commemoration of the site. Fourth point, quote, mitigate adverse impacts of public facilities on residential areas. This is policy seventeen of the residential element as found on page fifteen of the GRP. Policy seventeen point one identifies the requirement to buffer, quote, future electrical substations, roads. Fire stations and sanitary and storm sewer facilities, end quote, from residential areas to the extent reasonably practicable. The proposed annexation area does not involve or require the types of public facilities listed in policy seventeen point one. Therefore, this policy is not applicable to the proposed annexation. Lastly, this was not a goal brought up during testimony, but it is a pertinent goal of the GRP to address the testimony on environmental concerns. And that is goal six of the residential element, which states to, quote, minimize adverse environmental impacts. Of residential development and to integrate natural assets into residential development planning to the maximum extent possible, end quote. There are no significant natural resources under goal six located on the subject site. Public testimony surrounded potential contamination in the soil from the operation of the rail spur and a concern that development of this site. Would create an adverse environmental impact due to disturbing the soil during construction. Staff consulted the environmental protection agencies, EPA, Interactive Map and Viro Atlas, as has been brought up in uh, further testimony here. Uh, to review the subject site for brownfield status, hazardous waste sites, both active and inactive. Superfund sites and the toxic release inventory. No data was returned on or near this site that would indicate it is contaminated. Staff further consulted the Oregon Department of Environmental Quality, DEQ, for any local listings of brownfield or otherwise contaminated sites. And also did not find any such records. Thus, the information available indicates that there will not be adverse impacts, eh, environmental impacts on future development as a result of this annexation. Next slide. Staff did find an EPA publication on the redevelopment of rail properties, these being rail yards, rail fields, places that are more heavily contaminated. It is evident that entire rail yards with significant contamination are able to be redeveloped for residential use. And these properties go through a remediation process to clean them up. Even if there was contamination present on this segment of abandoned railroad, it could effectively be cleaned prior to development. Now I would like to address some further topics that have not yet been discussed. The code does not contain solar exposure standards for private development. Rather, there is a section of code that pertains to solar access protection, namely SDC five point one eight point one hundred. And is available to all residents who seek protections from vegetation. And or development that would block the sun and who plan to have solar panels installed on their home. An application can be filed with the planning department to ensure that sunlight reaches any proposed or existing solar panels. Next, it was said that the property is being annexed for City of Springfield use. That is not true. Is being annexed into the city, but remains in private ownership. Furthermore, it was mentioned that because the property is annexed, it would preclude the surrounding property owners from having the ability to purchase the property. This is also not true. Even after annexation, the surrounding neighbors still have the potential to approach the owner and collectively purchase the property. Another point that was raised surrounded the potential to develop the site in a raised rails to trails format or public land in the Park District. This is not possible because land is under private ownership and that owner has different development plans for the site. Rails to trails typically converts existing rail systems into trails and Will Amalane ultimately did not purchase the property at the time of auction. Slide. The GRP references to the abandoned rail spur actually apply to the entire Southern Pacific Railway line here in town. Not just the privately owned portion. And indeed, there have been large sections in the public right of way that have already been preserved for public use, such as the pedestrian path on Pioneer Parkway. Lastly, and this is the final lastly. The annexation process has repeatedly been referred to as a checkbox process. This is simply not true. On the surface, reciting the annexation approval criteria in a public hearing format may seem concise and to the point. But that is because it is the culmination of months of analysis and preparation that staff and many other agencies conduct well before the public hearing. We have a checkbox process for type one applications that never see a public hearing. And are not noticed out to the community for input because they are very minor in nature and receive an in-house approval. This is not the case with annexations as type three procedures are typically a more rigorous review process that staff conducts. And it's precisely, precisely why we are here tonight in front of you. So based on the updated information. And because all applicable annexation criteria have been satisfied. Staff recommends that this application be considered for approval by council. Thank you all, and I'm here for any questions you have.
Are there any questions for Tom? Michelle?
Comments first, but uh, then just a couple of questions, just for clarifications. Um. You know, I hear all of the concerns that have been shared. I, I empathize with every single one of them. You know, there are a lot of neighborhoods in Springfield that have these same struggles when we approve annexations. Um, I was really honestly hoping for a reason to, to deny this one, but as we've all heard, um. They meet the, you know, it meets the criteria for approval. Um, with that said, I do have just a couple of questions. Just want to clarify for future um. Development, uh, the development piece. Um. In relation to the soil concerns during the development process, will we require environmental reports?
There are no mechanisms that we can legally require the private property owner to provide um, anything that would be. Uh, otherwise not listed in the code to be provided for an application.
Okay. Just, I just want to get some of this out and clarify it for folks. Um, so with the amount of public opposition to the future development on this site. Are there options available to council to stay informed, provide feedback as we work through that process or is that, is that at a staff level?
Um. We have an option to, uh, through the director to elevate a application to a higher level. Um, I'm not sure, um, and you know, we, we are not at that point yet, so I, I dare not speculate.
Hey, Tom, we're gonna have Mark come and help with. With some of these questions. I see him rumbling.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. For the record, Mark Rust, uh, planning manager, and I know Christina, I think was about to weigh in as well. There, there is language and a process in our code to allow the director to elevate. An application from a type two, which would be the staff level decision to a public hearing, which would be at the uh, planning commission. Unfortunately, based on some new state law that was passed for housing specifically, we cannot use that. In a housing application if it's a clear and objective um, process. If the developer were to opt into or choose a discretionary approval process, then that would elevate it, but. Unfortunately, with all the new middle housing regulations and just housing in general. Um, we're required to approve housing based on clear and objective standards, so it would just be a staff level decision.
Okay, great. Thank you. I just wanted to get that out there and make sure we all understood that. Thank you.
Are there other questions?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt an ordinance annexing certain territory. Thirty-three thirty-three Pheasant Boulevard and vacant lot at map seventeen dash zero three dash twenty-two dash one three. Tax lot two zero eight zero one and approximately a two hundred and thirty foot long segment of Game Farm Road. And an approximately one hundred thirty-five foot long segment of Pheasant Boulevard to the city of Springfield. And withdrawing the same territory from the Rainbow Water District. And the Willa Kinsey Rural Fire Protection District, adopting a severability clause and providing an effective date.
Second.
Neil, could you call the vote, please?
Yes, Counsel Weber.
Yes.
Counsel Mo.
Yes, but I don't like it.
Counsel Rodley.
Yes.
Counsel, Counsel Blackwell.
Yes.
Counsel Doyle.
Aye.
And Counsel Pictionary.
Yes, thank you.
Motion passes, six yeses, zero nos, and we'll give you guys just a minute if you're perfectly welcome to stay or if you want to go. Well, I can't bear, I. I. I will be. I will be, I will be more than happy to answer your question when, when we're done. We can't respond here. Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item is business from the city attorney. Item number one is amendment to the city council operating policies and procedures. And uh, Christina Kraus is here for this item.
I'll make eye contact from a different angle this time. Um, I'm here tonight for Mary Bridgett, um, city attorney. To um, just present to you the annual resolution adopting your new council operating policies and procedures. You reviewed these in a work session on May twentieth. And um, the council considered some proposed changes. Um, specifically council attendance, updating language involving counselor attendance at council meetings. Uh, agenda and supportive material to the public, removing outdated section about providing the media with meeting materials. Um, adding flexibility and scheduling the enactment of ordinances so that they don't have to be adopted at um. Subsequent back-to-back meetings, but could a lot more time for changes in response to council direction or public comment. And then rewriting of the, of section nine on boards, commissions and committees to incorporate changes from the twenty twenty-three council retreat. Um, the council operating policies and procedures require a two-thirds vote of the counselors who are present, which is uh, all of you. Um, for approval. Any questions?
Victoria.
I was told this is the time for me to bring up something that might have to do with this because um, regarding counselor pay. And the potential of seeing that on a ballot in the near future. It's probably not the greatest time since we're not exactly the most popular right now in this room after that vote, but um. I, I think a lot of people don't understand that we read basically war and peace every single weekend and spend every single Monday here, so people show up for. Twice in a month, but we do this every single day, not to mention our committees and what have you. And so it's, it's time that we start seeing some compensation and I'd like to see how we process that.
So a um, change to the counselor compensation would require a charter amendment, which must be approved by voters. Um, I think that the next step in that would be some, uh, one of the options is for the mayor to propose. Uh, some kind of assemble some kind of committee to take a look at that. Um, but more importantly, I think there are, because compensation raises a potential conflict of, of interest. Issue with counselors, um, if you're making decisions on your own compensation, then we have to take specific steps. Um, following guidance from the Oregon Government Ethics Commission to make sure that that's done in a way that is ethically appropriate. And um, so I think the next step. Would likely be for city attorney's office to just provide some guidance on what next steps could look like. Um, to the council for follow-up on that discussion, but it couldn't be implemented through your operating policies and procedures anyway.
Yeah, could you get us some more information? I know there's been some interest about that and I'm more than happy to appoint a committee related to have a deeper conversation, but if you could. Uh, discuss it and get, get us some more and get back to us, that'd be great.
And I, I'm sorry, but I'd like that to happen sooner rather than later. I've been bringing this up for a year. And it just keeps getting kicked down the road and I keep being told we can't do it this last time because we're doing a bond and we can't do it this time. And so I'm, I'm really frustrated with not hearing an answer, so.
Yeah, so let, let them get the ethics information back. I hear you. Um. I know, I, there was a specific reason that I told you to bring it up at this time. So we brought it up, let the city attorney get us some more, more information about it. So that's actually kicking the ball, ball down the road till the uh, the process has started, but I hear you about the timing. All right.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution adopting amendments to this council operating policies and procedures.
Second.
Neil, could you call the vote, please?
Yes, Counsel Weber.
Yes.
Counsel Mo.
Yes.
Counsel Rodley.
Yes.
Counsel Blackwell.
Yes.
Counsel Doyle.
Aye.
And Counsel Pictionary.
Yes, thank you.
Motion passes, six yeses, zero nos. Any other business?
Any other, I'm sorry, I missed any other business from the city manager.
No further business.
Any further business from the city attorney?
Okay, all right, we are wrapped, um, and I'm going to adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.